Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for the city of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, February 6th, that's 6:02 PM. City Clerk Flamson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Councilmember Dunsford?
Here.
Mayor Canning?
Here, thank you. If you haven't already done so, if you could please silence your phone, if your phone rings during the council meeting, most of you know this rule, you buy the first round of drinks for everyone in the room.[102.92][102.92](laughter) Seems fair. Please stand and join for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City Council did have a closed session meeting prior to this, it commenced at 5:30 PM. It was for conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of section 5495, 6.9, one potential case, there is no reportable action at this time. At this point, I will open oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda, pursuant to Government Code, section 5495, 4.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot act on speaker, cannot act on any issue. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to three minutes maximum, so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the City Council. And as a reminder, we do hold you to the three minutes, and there is no allotment of your time to another speaker. I have three speaker cards that I'll start with. I have Mary Hastings. Mary, if you would so choose, share with us your name and address, but you're not required to do so, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. Mary Hastings, 2101 Table Rock Court, Calistoga. Good evening. I would like to invite the representatives of the Fire Association up to the podium. It was an honor for the Rotary Club of Calistoga to support the Firefighters Association with their fundraiser, to provide fire relief funds for Calistoga. On behalf of the Rotary Club of Calistoga, I am pleased to present with, to you tonight, the check for $34,779.65 as part of the fire relief efforts in Calistoga.[252.51][252.51](applause) Thank you so much for your efforts and for your continued support of Calistoga. We love you.[273.83][273.83](laughter)
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mary, and thank you to the Rotary for that. Lily Torres? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Liliana Torres Finer, a senior in ASB. On behalf of ASB, we would like to thank Mayor Canning for making an appearance at the MLK Cleanup Day at the high school. Also, we would like to give thanks to the city for letting us use their tools that day to help pick up trash around the high school. The students of ASB hope that Martin Luther King Cleanup Day will become an annual event to include the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, and maybe you can, for those who might not be in the know, what is ASB?
ASB is a student leadership class where we have representatives, a student rep, ASB president, vice president, and a secretary and treasurer. They help have events for the school and promote awareness of certain issues at our school, like bullying and also immigration sometimes. And we also put on dances and help the school have more pride beware.
Thank you. And at the last City Council meeting, I made mention of the fact that almost 50 students from our high school, on their day off, showed up at the high school and did a cleanup day, and it was fantastic, and I was very happy to participate. And I may have even guilted a few adults who didn't do community service on MLK Day, so well done. Thank you guys very much.[381.71][381.71](applause) Next speaker card I have is from Viri Agapov.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to invite, my name is Viri Agapov, and I'm here to invite everyone. The North Bay Rapid Response Network of Sonoma and Napa County are going to be hosting a training here in Calistoga this coming Sunday, February 11th, from 4 to 6 PM. And they're going to be doing a training on how to become a legal observer, and this is to, in case of ICE raids. So, the community can be informed and become an ally for our immigrant community. So, I'm going to leave some flyers in the back. If you have any other questions, I'll be hanging around after the meeting.
And can you restate the date, time, and location, please?
Yes, Sunday, February 11th, from 4 to 6, here in the community center.
Thank you very much. Those are the end of the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council under oral communication on a matter that is either on the consent calendar but not on the agenda? All right, I will close oral communication, and will seek adoption of the, this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested. So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, I have a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega, please.
Yes, I just want to remind our community that this country, it was funded by immigrants from all over the world. And in these times that things were, things happening, you know, we see the news and all this scary news that they going around about ICE, doing raids and taking immigrants, sometimes that they've been living here their entire life. So, I just want to remind our community about our neighbors. We are a very small community. We are very lucky to have good neighbors. And these neighbors, they are part of this community. They provide, they send their kids to school, they work in the community, they pay their taxes. So, I just want the community to be aware of them, and then be sensitive, be sensitive when you hear, you know, that something happened, and be there for your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, towns. As the meeting goes on, we don't encourage clapping. Thank you. Councilmember Barnes?
Nothing tonight.
You don't get applause for that.
Sure.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, I think back when the big windstorm occurred on the night of the fire, a tree, branch, or a limb came down on the fence that goes around the swimming pool. And that fence has still not been repaired as yet. I have some concerns that it makes access for inquiring minds perhaps a little too easily. And if that isn't already a priority for the city to have that repaired, it should be.
Just a, just a comment, there's a lot of work that we've already put purchase orders in, like the fence cleanup. That was one of the first orders that we made. We were told at the time that the fence contractor was several months out on their work because of the damage that occurred throughout the area. So, we've already got them on order. I'll ask for an update on when that goes in, but-
Yeah, if there's, if there's something that we can put in there temporarily, because I really wouldn't want a tragedy over there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Couple items. We were tentatively scheduled to have the February Community Forum, topic be fire response based on the Tubbs Fire and initiatives and improvements moving forward. We have a conflict, so that's going to be moved until March. And what is the third Wednesday in March? We'll get back to it. It'll be published in the papers. Second thing I wanted to bring up is, because we've been asked quite a bit, as you know, the city and the county, city of Calistoga, county of Napa, have been in discussions on a potential JPA, Joint Powers Arrangement, or Authority, with the county of Napa regarding the fairgrounds. The county has postponed their, had postponed their January 30th meeting to a future date. The city was aware of that in advance and were supportive of that action based on those discussions, so stay tuned on that. And then I want to continue to thank all the residents of Calistoga and businesses as we head into fundraising season for many of our service clubs, organizations, art center, et cetera. This community continues to be very generous in your time, your resources. And the next couple of months, a lot of you become winners because you win these charity auctions. So, thank you for continuing to do that. City Manager Feek, your report, please.
I only have one, one item that I'd like to share. We received a letter from Congressman Thompson's office. They would like to honor our Calistoga Fire Department and Police Departments for the work that they did during the recent Napa Fire Complex, which is, which is exciting. So, this Sunday, also at 4 PM, unfortunately, we got a conflict with events going on here in town. Members of our law enforcement and fire departments will be going down to meet at Vallejo. They did reserve enough spots for City of Calistoga if we'd like to send anyone there. So, if any City Council member would like to go, also we'll make sure that we send several of our uniformed officers, firefighters, to be present as well. We're excited for the recognition they continue to get. They did an excellent job during the fire. And we also appreciate the generosity of many groups in the community who donated to efforts in fire relief, much like tonight, where a check for $34,000 was donated. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to H, Proclamations, Presentations, and Awards. The first item is recognition of Calistoga youth for service during the Tubbs Fire. During the Tubbs Fire, Claudia Rios and Jose Manuel Vega, did I get that right? Yes, all right, because it's different than what I have in front of me. Manuel Vega were evacuated to the Napa Valley College campus, like so many other Calistogans. Their mission during the time of crisis was to stay active and help others in any way they could. They stepped out of the crowd of approximately 75 children and selflessly assisted Sacramento County Sheriff's deputies in handing out toys to all of the children in the shelter. They distributed other essentials as well. These two students were also recognized for the selfless acts by Supervisor Susan Peters of the Sacramento County Government Board. They were awarded a certificate of appreciation by Sacramento Sheriff's Deputy Joe Gordon and Sheriff's Community Impact Program Executive Director Mike Segian at an earlier Calistoga Joint Unified School District meeting. So, with that said, are Jose and Claudia here tonight, I hope?
There is only Jose.
Jose, where are you? Come on up to the podium, Jose. Well, I'm going to give you both of them. Can you make sure Claudia gets hers?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll meet you right there. I'm wearing your school colors, too. I like that. Thank you. Keep your mayor here, right?[879.01][879.01](laughter)
We have next an employee service award for City Clerk Flamson for, wow, Kathy, has it already been five years? Wow. For five years of service to the city of Calistoga, we're going to give you a two for Kathy. We'll get to that in a moment, because I also want to, and we want to recognize you, for achievement of Master Municipal Clerk, an MMC. You earned, you earned your first designation, Certified Municipal Clerk, on March 4th, 2016, which is designed to enhance the job performance of the clerk. This designation requires the attendance of extensive education programs, as well as pertinent experiences in a municipality. Kathy was just, has just earned the second designation of MMC, Master Municipal Clerk, on January 19th, 2018. The MMC designation is a more advanced program. It has an extensive and rigorous educational component and a professional contribution component. It is a declaration that Kathy has demonstrated a mastery of administrative skills critical to good government. Kathy has given significant contributions to the city of Calistoga and to her community, and you do a fantastic job supporting the community and this council. So, Kathy, I'll give you two of these. So, thank you very much.[962.66][962.66](applause)
I just wanted to thank everyone here, and especially Richard Spitler, who gave me an opportunity, someone with no municipal background. I just appreciate softly landing in Calistoga at the end of my career. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're lucky to have you. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
It is through the Office of City Clerk that keeps us legally compliant with both, with county, state, and federal reporting, recording, and legislation. So, thank you for doing that. And what's that?
Nagging.
And nagging, yes. And keeps us up to date on our FPPC filings.
In the nicest possible way.
Yeah. All right. Presentation of Police Officer and Police Dispatcher of the Year. And to take us through that will be our own Chief, Chief Mitch Selaya. Chief Selaya.
Honorable Mayor, City Council members, City Manager Feek, and City Clerk Kathy Flamson, thank you for allowing me to give my presentation today. So, every year, we do Officer and Dispatcher of the Year. And for both positions awards, there's criteria that they have to meet to get nominated. And I'd like to just briefly share with the criterias, and then invite the two candidates up. So, they need to either, one, be exemplar outstanding job performance, provide a significant contribution or service to the community, have actions on or off duty beyond the call of duty, individual efforts to enhance the professional image of the police department or law enforcement, or the relationship with the community, and last, demonstration of service and actions above self. So, with that, I'd like to invite Senior Officer Christine Romo and Senior Dispatcher Molly Harden up to the front.[1112.25][1112.25](applause) So, I'm going to start with Dispatcher Molly Harden. So, one of the things is when they get nominated, I get to read all the comments and things like that. And just to give you a little insight as far as why they are Dispatcher and Office of the Year. For Molly, there's a constant theme when people discuss or talk about Molly, and it's one, her outstanding work ethic. Goes the extra mile, is reliable and knowledgeable, positive attitude, boosts morale, and comments such as, she is the standard that all dispatchers should strive to. And having worked with her, or for her, for the last five years, truly deserves this award. And I'd like to present her the Dispatcher of the Year. I'd allow her to say anything she would like. Did I mention she's brief and concise and to the-
Very efficient.
Very efficient. Senior Officer Christine Romo, she's been with us for a little over 15 years, approaching 16 years. And again, a couple of comments that are typical that we, I receive of Officer Romo, great personality and interpersonal skills. I think she knows everybody in town. And everybody, for the most part, I think, knows her. Willing to go above and beyond. She is not only our senior officer, but she's also our training officer. And so, as you know, we've hired a lot of young staff, and Christie has taken them under her wing and done the field training with Sergeant Martin. And so, that was honorable mention about mentoring them and bringing them along. Again, putting others before herself, significant contributions during the Tubbs Fire. As some of you know, that she was significantly impacted, and the Lake County Fire lost her home. And so, you know, it was pretty traumatic when this fire occurred, even though it wasn't home, just everything that was going around. So, just performed admirable and professionally during this, during that time. And of course, actions above and beyond, and then always willing to lend a helping hand. And so, with that, I'd like to present Senior Officer Christine Romo with Officer of the Year. Did you have to say something? Thank you, at least.
Thank you.
City Council, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you both to Molly and Christie. I almost didn't recognize you, not in a uniform.[1291.54][1291.54](laughter) But sincere thank you for what you do for this community. We're very fortunate. And the fact that you both do it, even during times of trouble, with a smile, because you're a very calming influence. I know that goes a long way. And thank you for the serious work that you do for this community.
Thank you.
So, in case anyone within the community has not seen it yet, we do have two bridges currently under construction, okay? And our next presentation this evening is Bridge Projects and Lincoln Avenue ADA Ramp Updates. And with us, I believe, we have some Caltrans representatives. Welcome back, guys. So, please share with us your name and what you do for Caltrans, and then the rest is up to you.
Thank you, Mayor Canning. Thank you, Council, and everyone tonight. My name is Vince Chacala. I'm the Caltrans Public Information Officer here in Napa County. Thank you for having us back. We look forward to sharing some information about our projects, and also answering any questions you may have about our projects. I'm joined tonight by our Regional Project Manager, Kelly Hershberg, and our Project Manager, Ahmad Rahimi. Ahmad's going to speak a little bit about tonight, about our upcoming project, which is the ADA curb ramp project. Has not started yet, but it's going to start soon. So, Ahmad's going to speak about that. And then after, after Ahmad, then Kelly's going to talk a little bit, give us an update on the Napa River Bridge. So, with that, Ahmad.
Thank you, Vince. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and City Council members of the city of Calistoga, and the city staff, and the great people, citizens of Calistoga. Ahmad Rahimi, I'm here to present an upcoming project in the summer of 2018. We're going to be constructing and upgrading some of the Americans with Disabilities Act curb ramps in the city of Calistoga, both on State Routes 29 and 128. And, so, I'm going to go over the presentation as listed here. I'm going to describe the project and show the project plans in brief page of the project plans, and what's our communication plan, and what's the project schedule, and then we can open it up to questions and try to answer any questions you may have. So, with that, the purpose of this project is to comply with the 2010 Americans with Disabilities Act standards for pedestrians at the intersections. And the project is needed in an effort to complete our obligations under the ADA regulations for ramps on State Routes 29 and 128. And this project consists of approximately, well, consists of 10 different intersections in the city of Calistoga on 128, 129, and totaling 24 ramps. We're going to be either upgrading or constructing new ramps at these intersections. The intersections, there are two locations on State Route 128. They're at Berry Street and Elm Street, and each one has one ramp to be constructed there. And then we have another location at the corner of 128 and 129, which is the corner of Foothill and Lincoln, for most of Calistogans purposes, I guess, they refer to the city street names. And then we have more locations on Mirtle, on Lincoln Avenue, Cedar, Washington Street, Fairway, Stevenson, and Waupu and Lake Streets. So, each one of these intersections, we have a different number of ramps to be constructed or upgraded. So, at 128 and 129, we have one ramp being constructed at the northeast corner. I hope you could imagine some of that. And then we got three of them at Mirtle Street, northeast, southeast, and southwest. And on Cedar Street, we have the, all four corners. And on Fairway, we actually have five ramps that will be constructed. And at Stevenson, we have two ramps, and Waupu, we have two ramps, and one at Lake Street. So, of course, with the construction of all these ramps, 24 locations, as I mentioned, we are going to have some sort of disruption to traffic and some lane or shoulder closures. And I'm going to go over that a little bit. The good thing is that the city streets only can be reduced to one lane. So, we'll always keep, that doesn't include Foothill and Lincoln, by the way. Okay, I'm talking about the city streets that cross the state routes. So, we're going to have, the contractor may be closing down the streets to only one lane, one through lane, and they may have reversible lane, meaning that they could lead traffic back and forth on both directions. And that number of hours will be from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then for State Routes 29 and 128, which is Foothill and Lincoln, they could only close the shoulder. So, they cannot close any lanes. So, you have two lanes of traffic on those main routes. And again, the working hours will be the same, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And the contractor has to complete all of the ramps on one side of the highway before they move over to the other side. They can't be disrupting the shoulders on both sides of the highway at one time. So, they have to finish up all the ramps on the, let's say, the northbound of 29 before they move over to the southbound. And we don't know at this time which ones, the contractor will have a choice to decide which one they will take on first. And then, and the contractor may only work at one ramp per intersection. So, they cannot take up the whole intersection, or take up two ramps at one intersection. They can only work at one ramp at a time. But they can work at multiple ramps at different intersections. So, I hope that- So I hope that is clear. And they cannot start any demolition work before 9:00 a.m. So if there is any noise-making equipment that needs to work, they cannot do that before 9:00 a.m. That's a part of our specifications. And they cannot close any driveways. So all driveways are to remain open at all times. And so, we have a communication plan. And we'll be emailing the stakeholders, the cities, I mean, the city, county, the elected officials and emergency services, employers, businesses, and of course, the city public works. And then we'll be sending out flyers. We'll be mailing out flyers to businesses and residences. And then we'll also have press releases to newspapers and radio and television, maybe? Don't, Vince.
I can interject a little bit. Yeah, so as the Public Information Officer for Caltrans, what I like to do on projects like this, especially in Calistoga, is I like to send out some sort of announcing, announcing the project. So what we typically have done, if you've been involved with the bridge projects, is we send out some flyers to the neighborhood near the project. And we'll have information on there, basically an overview of what Ahmad was just speaking about, kind of overview of the project. But maybe by then, we'll have some more details, especially which intersections, and then, you know, what timeframe, what dates. So one, kind of a splash, flyers, get that out. And then also on the flyers, we will have created a webpage. So all the information kind of lives on a webpage. If you're on social media, we'll update that. We'll have pictures, maps. And then as the project goes on, then we'll also have traffic advisories. So they will know if you're following us on Twitter or if you're following the webpage. And then we'll have like updates of what intersections we're at. So it could be something, and we'll have to kind of see how this goes. But typically, I mean, I see it as, you know, maybe it's an update once a week or maybe every other week, depending on how much work we have. And then obviously, if you have an immediate question that's not, you know, recognized, you know, offhand, you know, if you need more information right off, then you can contact me. My phone number's up there. And then my email's on there as well. And if you need more information, then Ahmad is our project manager, and he could answer questions as well. But if you have general questions, then yeah, please get those to me. If you have specific questions, kind of, you know, the technical questions, then those go to Ahmad. And then if I have a question I don't know, then I go to Ahmad. So yeah, so that's where we're at. We're not in construction yet on the ADA ramps. So then we're probably looking at sending out, you know, kind of like a splash with a flyer and kind of like more information in the next couple of weeks or so. So it's coming. We just don't, we don't have the specific on the timing. But I think Ahmad's gonna talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you.
All right. So the project's schedule, we just received the bids, and we are planning to start construction in May or June of this year. And we should be all done with it by the end of the year. And maybe sooner. This is not really a big project. We're not expecting a long time for it, hopefully. And that's the end of the presentation, if you have any questions.
Couple of questions for you. First, you're clear on the city's preference on color of ramp pads, correct?
Yes.
So if you can say the words for me, we will not use the yellow, bright yellow pads.
Yes, they won't be yellow pads, but they will be red brick maroon pads.
Awesome. Thank you. And then one other, kind of a little bit out of scope from the ADA compliance. And by the way, thank you for doing this. I know this has been a project that we've been trying to get done for quite some time. So thanks for bringing that to the attention and getting it done. Outside of the scope of the ADA, but intersection-related, the crosswalk signal at the intersection of Lincoln and Washington in front of Brandon's Grill
Okay.
has been under repair by you guys for seven months now.
Okay.
So if you can have someone expedite that, there is no ability for a pedestrian to activate the signal at that pole.
Okay.
So.
We'll get on that tomorrow and
Great.
Try to, yeah, check it out aggressively.
Thank you. Other council members, questions on the ADA ramping issue? All right. Anyone in the public with a question on this? Yes, sir.
What's the average cost to put two ramps on one corner?
Oh, that's
He can get back to you on that.
You know, each ramp is different, and we have a lot of special conditions, and we have a lot of rules that we gotta follow. It looks really simple, but believe me, you know, this is my first curb ramp project, and it was, it was not easy at all. Because you have very little space to meet all these design criteria. You know, the slopes have to be only up to a certain amount. They can't, the length of the ramp has to be a certain amount. And it's just really mind-boggling, believe it or not. It's much easier to design freeways and, you know, interchanges than the ADA curb ramps. And, you know, and Mike Kern, our great Public Works Director, we have a great relationship with him and the city staff. You know, they are sort of in the loop of what we have to go through for these ramps. But they're, they're all, you know, I couldn't put a price tag on it. There's a lot of other costs that are associated with each project. Mobilization, traffic control, all of those will change the cost of each, you know, per unit of each ramp. So we basically go based on quantities of material and the work based on historical data for our estimates. So it's really tough for me to give you a cost of each ramp.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Oh, please.
Ahmad, do you take care of the streetlights? If a streetlight is out, is that Caltrans issue to change out the bulb or the light?
I am not absolutely sure. It depends on the maintenance agreement between the city and Caltrans. I'm not sure at this moment, but if you have any
The large, the large
I could find out
The large streetlight on the corner of Cedar and Lincoln has been out for months. And it's a very, very dangerous crossing area right there, because that's where the start of the bridge construction is.
Okay.
And I've made several requests for it to be fixed, and it has not.
I'll get on that tomorrow. We'll be following up on that first thing tomorrow.
You were actually able to put in a brand-new whole light fixture in about a day. So a light bulb, I would hope, is
I don't know if we could do that.
All right. You already did it.
It's a long time for our projects to develop. But yes, we'll, I'll find out, and, you know, we'll definitely get back with probably Public Works
Great.
and work with them on these two items.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, are you next? So just as a point of information, Jim Barnes, as your council member, myself as your mayor, represent the city of Calistoga on the Napa Valley Transit Authority. Every month, it's a riveting meeting. And that's the only time we get to see Kelly is down there. But you've been back to Calistoga several times as a result of our bridge project, so welcome back.
Yeah, thank you so much. I was just thinking, what a warm town it is. It's just so, you're so welcoming, and everybody's so anticipating of all that is happening. So it feels great to come back here.
You should stick around for the next agenda item. Let's see how that goes.
Maybe I should sit right before.
We plan to blame Caltrans for the whole thing.
So actually, you know what? I was, I was thinking, when was the last time I made this presentation? I think it was exactly a year ago at this room. So that's right before we started the construction. So what we did was, I don't have a separate presentation, but we passed out the flyer. So, or there's some on the back, if you don't have it. So basically, we put the chronology of kind of the month as a construction, as a progress. And we'll be in season number two. So basically, it will be almost identical, but it will be on the other side of the Napa River. And, you know, thank you so much for putting up with us. You know, we're not perfect, but I think our construction team tried to do their best to address any concerns and issues that we have. And us being here tonight, you know, we also are very concerned about any impact the business may have with the curb ramps and things. So we wanted to be sensitive and wanted to let you know the upcoming project that may impact the business or any circulation movement within the city of Calistoga. So I don't want to take up too much of your time, because you have a full agenda, but I wanted to leave you with the handouts and any information that you seek. And then, you know, Vince is a PIO, and I'm available, Ahmad is available. So you could call us anytime, and we left our phone numbers there as well.
All right. You're not getting off that easy.
Oh, okay.
I'll give you the, I'll give you the easy one first. Estimated completion time on the Berry Street Bridge?
Berry Street?
Berry Street.
I guess that's, I have to turn to Mike.
That's not a Caltrans project?
They just give us money.
Oh, okay.
We have to stay on their good side.
Don't run away, Kelly, because the next bridge is coming up.
So we're hoping to have traffic back on the bridge by the first, probably by the second week in March.
Okay.
There's still some, some tangential things that need to be done. One of the things that we're gonna do is reconstruct the intersection of Third Street and Washington. So that'll be completely reconstructed. That'll be at our dime, but we think it's the appropriate time to do that. That'll include the two new ADA ramps on, I guess, the east side of Washington. Then there's also going to be some significant restoration of the Fireman's Park. That's gonna come separate from the actual opening of the bridge. So I anticipate that there'll be like two ribbon cuttings, one to get the bridge open, then one to reinstate the park. And I don't have a completion date on the park, but the most important thing for us is to get the traffic going and the pedestrians across the bridge.
Great. Thank you. And I want to thank you again for championing the cause, for having that pedestrian bridge installed. There are literally hundreds of crossings a day that happen on that bridge safely, especially for kids getting to school. So I know that took a little longer than we wanted, but thank you. It's been very effective. Anyone else on questions on Berry before we get to the fun one? Yes, please.
Is the footbridge on Berry gonna remain there, or is it being moved?
It'll be relocated if all goes well and Fish and Wildlife agrees. It'll be relocated to span from Sharpstein Plaza, which is behind the Police Department, over to Pioneer Park. All right? Yep, right behind us, actually. So that's, that's its purpose. It was designed to be moved for that purpose, and it was a good collaboration between our Director of Public Works and Caltrans and the contractors to basically overbuild that current pedestrian bridge for permanent use next door. So, all right, Kelly, come on up. Let's talk about Lincoln Avenue Bridge. First, what is the estimated flip time when you switch to the other side?
So what they're doing right now is tonight, tomorrow night, and I believe Thursday night, PG&E will be out there doing the tie-in. So basically, let's see, I don't have the whole presentation, but we have a lot of utilities inside the bridge, right? We have a water line, we have a fiber optic AT&amp;T facility, as well as a PG&E gas. So we had to stage in a way to first relocate it and then tie back later. So let me see, maybe this will be a good segue. So as you could tell, the very last sheet, do you see all those pipes? So those are all the different utilities that is in the bridge itself. So fiber optic cable lines, and then three of the yellow ones are actually city water line. And then one furthest away is a gas line. And then that's what, that's a side on the, what was it, downstream of the bridge or northbound 29. And the gas line is now being connected back, because existing gas line is on the upstream or the southbound direction of it. So the PG&E is doing that work. And then we have 12 conduits for the AT&amp;T line. And there's an AT&amp;T building right at the corner. So they, it's almost like, for AT&amp;T, we actually had to move twice. They're at the, they're at the, where first demolition needs to occur. So we actually relocated them on the upstream or the southbound direction underneath the sidewalk. And then it took them a few months to do the splicing, because basically, what happened is even if you put the conduits and pulled the cables, only one person could fit in the manual at a time. And then you have to splice it manually. I mean, it's not one wire at a time, but there's like 14 pairs. So it's just pretty laborious and time-consuming thing. So even though it looks like there's not that much happening, the utility has to occur this winter. And then, so after PG&E is moved out, you know, we're anticipating them to be done like in a week or so, after they do tie-in and clean it up. And then we expect AT&amp;T people to come back, pull the cable, and start splicing. And then once they are done with the splicing, then we could start doing the piles again. Remember those big cages that we had the pictures of? So almost like those, three on each direction, each side of the bridge has to go in, right? And then at the same, before we could, I mean, after we switch the traffic, which is where all the utility has to be completed, then we could start work on the north. So we're anticipating, they're probably shifting the traffic either May. But what we'll do is, as a project progress, you know, we could give you updates, like through, I guess we could communicate with Public Works, you know, Derek and Mike. Or we could also put it out as our home webpage that is accessible to everybody.
So for clarification, you said the month of May? I was told it was gonna be happening actually in a couple of weeks.
For the switching the traffic?
Yeah.
I need to go back and check, because I think the AT&amp;T line is not done splicing. It doesn't look quite done yet there. Yeah. But I'll go back and if it's any different, I could send a correction.
Please.
Yeah.
All right. Any other council members, questions on Lincoln Avenue? Anyone in the public, Lincoln Avenue? Yes, sir.
One nice thing about the Berry Street Bridge is a pedestrian in Calistoga and able to watch the progress. Why is it that the construction is always so hidden on the Lincoln Street Bridge? It's fun as a resident to be able to see, oh, look what they're doing, look what they're doing. I feel
Oh.
Come, come to the Calistoga Inn, they got great views.
I was gonna recommend that. You have a patio, like first, but side distance to the, well, I think, you know what it is, all due to respect, we have a thing called, they call them gawking, so, or anti-gawking screen. For, what we, what we found out is if it's too open and people could see it, they gawk, and then therefore they kind of impede the traffic. So, and then sometimes it's also dust control issue, too. So typically, almost all of our freeway job, I don't mean to be so exclusive and taking people not able to inviting in, but it is a construction site, so it is dusty and a lot of things are going on. So, you know, we feel it might be better served publicly if it, if it is screened off.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Kelly, thank you very much. Vince, thank you. And Ahmad, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented, unless anyone's requesting an item to be pulled.
Yes, Mayor Canning, I'd like to have item six pulled.
All right. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to move the consent calendar and all items excluding item number six.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Barnes. We have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Councilmember Kraus, please speak to item number six.
Yes. Several months ago, when we were going to close, or I guess that would be the proper term, close the local emergency, I felt we were doing it a little bit too soon, given the possibility of rain coming in and causing additional damage up at the reservoir. And that was my key concern. However, we're now several months, at least three months, down the road, and we've had some rain. I know the hillsides have greened up pretty good. We don't seem to be having any runoff, although we have had a lot of dry weather. And I weather. And I would feel comfortable at this time if rather than continuing the state of local emergency, to close it if that would be agreeable with the Public Works Director yourself and the rest of the council members.
City Manager Feek.
I know, you know, I won't speak for Public Works Director Mike Kern, but I know we've had a lot of discussions about what I'll call mitigating activities that we need to do up near Kimball Reservoir. And so I think what I would recommend at this point is right now, I know we still don't have full, we're still not out of the rainy season. And one of our concerns is if we get a very heavy rainfall, what that does to erosion and sediment that comes into Kimball. So a lot of the early work that we did, you know, hopefully we'll continue to protect the reservoir and the watershed, but at the same time, we haven't had the kind of rains that we were anticipating. So if, if you would, we, we can keep the local emergency declaration in place for six months as long as we continue reviewing it every month. So I think at this time, what I would recommend is we continue closure. Let me speak with Public Works Director. Make sure there's no other issues. Look at some forecasts and I think, I think we're.
I'm, I'm fine with that. And if next month you come back to close it, that would be fine or continue it open. But I know that my voice was one of the voices to keep the emergency open. And I thought I'd be vocal in saying that I think you can close at any time. But I defer to you and keeping it open a few more months if that's what's necessary. I don't have a problem.
All right. Any other council members? All right. Anyone in the public? All right. Councilmember Kraus, would you like to move on this item?
Yes. I move that we adopt the resolution continuing the state of local emergency.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. We have a second by Councilmember Barnes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on, there are no public hearings, but moving on to item number K, General Government, item number 10. Update to City Council regarding water and wastewater free discussion. The recommended action is to accept the report. Taking us through this item this evening will be City Manager Feek.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I sure wish that I could be up here either presenting checks or giving awards to residents or even talking about some cool bridge projects. And even, and even referring to people as squawkers and having people clap when they were done. How do they get away with that? As you know, I like to have a little bit of fun before the meeting gets started. And I won't spend as much time, I did not prepare a playlist, but I do want to say, I'm going to tell everybody a little bit about how my week started. Did anybody here watch a football game on Sunday night? A show of hands. Did anybody here have the gall to root for the New England Patriots?
Where'd the mayor go?
The mayor left the room, as you can see. Well, I'll just have you know that in a Super Bowl party, I, knowing that I was doing a little bit of sycophanting, which is a synonym for butt kissing, I rooted for the New England Patriots. I figured it'd keep me in good standing with the mayor. And the first thing that happened to me when I showed up to work on Monday morning was I broke the zipper on my pants. That is what I get for the one time I root for the New England Patriots. That being, that being said, let's jump right in. If you will, my name is Dylan Feek. I'm the City Manager in Calistoga, now getting really close to two years. I did a presentation on water, wastewater rates about a month ago. And so we've been diligently working on a lot of things. So council, if you will, what I'd like to do is I'm going to try and move through this a little bit quicker than I would normally. Hopefully we can get to the very end, talk about some options that council has. Certain that there's going to be some public input feedback. But I think at the end of tonight, what I'd like the goal to be is as I, as myself, as staff, as our consultants, go back to prepare final resolutions for the City Council to adopt at our next meeting on February 20th. So we'll talk a little bit about where we're at right now currently, some work that we've been doing since our original meeting, and then with the goal in mind of you giving us clear direction for what to prepare. So we actually bring resolutions to your council for consideration in two weeks. As you just saw the agenda, I want to talk just briefly about the timeline. You know, this process, we started, myself representing city staff, as well as two members of the City Council ad hoc committee, Gary Kraus, Jim Barnes, spent a lot of time, starting in November, working through the summer to talk about all things water, wastewater. Let's look at operational costs. Let's look at capital costs. Let's look at what a cease and desist order says, what it means, what we have to comply with. So I want to appreciate both of them, as well as staff time that's gone into this. Beginning in fall is when we really start that public process of proposing new rates. At the time, on November 7, Bartle Wells Associates proposed their rate presentation, which is what we've kind of kept in front of the council, in front of residents since that time. We also approved the Prop 218 notice, which was mailed out. And through those next two months, November, December, we then scheduled the public hearing for January 2. We had the community forum on January 10. We had a staff update and discussion allowed for public comment on January 16. And now here we are, February 6, again, so more discussions on water wastewater rates. As proposed, that original rate, and what you'll see throughout the slides is what I'd call the original proposal or the average rate increase. And I'll, and I'll show what the original numbers were compared to what options you have to consider. Again, keep in mind, it's really hard to just take one user and show, now this is how it is for everybody. You know, we have individual counts. People use different amounts of water. They use different meters. So the rates as proposed for an average single-family residential were shown here. We do five-year rate study, and you can see very significant increases for both water and wastewater. I won't spend a lot of time talking about why that is because we've already discussed that, but just the key points that I'd like to make is, one, we're not, we're not building in, if you will, future grant proceeds. We're, you know, the wastewater rates, as you see, do not account for if the city receives a hazard mitigation grant to do our Riverside Pond Lightning Project. We're very intentional about that because the city's on the hook to do that work. It's part of the cease and desist order. And let's not be too rosy. If we get the grant money, what options do we have? That's why council's talked about things like rebates or giving some kind of refund back to residents. The key points that I'd make on this rate study are that, one, in 2015, there was a new law which basically told us the rules. We could not have a tiered rate structure if we could not justify the cost charging different rates. We've spent a lot of time back in the summer looking at can we charge at different rates? And we can't. It's too difficult to determine with the way the city does billing, with the way the city does our current rates. We also currently have a fixed variable rate model where 32% of our current revenue for water, wastewater is, for water is based on, is a fixed rate. 68% comes from a variable rate. It's all dependent on how much water actually flows through the meter. And one of the proposals that's been, the recommendation has been to increase the amount of rate-based revenue to more on the fixed side. So to go from 32% fixed to 40% fixed. So more of your basic meter charge is 40% fixed. One of the items that we have to deal with, and this is why you would see more steep increases in the first years, is the city currently is not meeting our debt coverage. So when we issued debt years ago, we committed to having a certain amount of revenue available at all times, and we haven't been able to do that. We've been limping along to fund operations, to fund capital needs that we could, but we've not, we're not satisfying that requirement. I showed these slides a couple of times, again, you know, just showing how we compare to other cities in the area. It's kind of hard to see, but starting with Windsor on the very bottom, going up to St. Helena on the far right, you can see how, you know, rates look across the area. And I'll come back to this slide in a minute. But one thing I want to point out now is the lighter blue represents the amount of revenue that's generated from fixed rates, and the darker blue represents the amount that's generated from the variable rate. On wastewater, we do wastewater differently. Because we don't require residential customers to put a wastewater meter at their house, we just charged a fixed rate. And so residential, single-family, multifamily, mobile home, they all pay a fixed fee. Commercial customers are different, where they do install commercial meters. We base, they pay the cost based on how much wastewater actually flows through the meter. These next few slides that I want to point out are really kind of three things that have come up in the, well, they're three things that we wanted to look at, but also things that have come up during public discussions. So one of the things that is, that I'm really optimistic about is a year ago, when I tried to refinance our existing debt and water and wastewater funds, we were working on a rate study. We weren't meeting current debt coverage, and we hadn't received at the time significant impact fees from Silver Rose Project. Since that time, we've done a lot. We've completed our rate study. We've held a public hearing. We've closed a public hearing. We're discussing rates. We've also collected significant one-time impact fees. So a lot of these, the situation for the city has changed, where now we can actually make a really good case for refinancing our debt and issuing new debt. In addition, currently, the municipal bond market, it's, it's very ripe for getting a good issuance. And so speaking with, the city has a financial advisor, which has to be separate from bond council. We do this anytime we issue debt. We've spoken with them. We're actually preparing an agenda item for City Council to proceed with refinancing debt. And we'll do that on the same night, the 20th, that I'd like to, that I'd like council to consider adopting new rates. I think, one, it's, it indicates that we're serious about refinancing our debt, and we do it on the same night we adopt the new rates. When, we just look at some numbers. Again, I don't want anybody to be very, you know, to hone in on the, on the bottom line. But basically, there are three debt issuances in our water fund, and there are three debt issuances in our wastewater fund. There are, there's one debt obligation in each fund that either has very low interest rate or is going to be retiring within the next six years, which is our SRF loan, the most significant loan that we have on the wastewater side. So I would not recommend we refinance these obligations. Low interest already, or it ends soon. But there are two issuances in each fund that remain. And so assuming we, we only refinance that debt, assuming we keep our amortization schedules the same, so the debt expires the same year it normally would, what could savings look like based on, you know, an average market rate right now? When we do a public offering, it's competitively bid. We could get a better rate. We could have someone who really wants to offer this muni bond, and we could see savings that are greater than what we had. A great example of that is the school district recently refinanced debt. They had estimated $2.2 million in savings and ended up saving more than $2.4 million. So, so, you know, again, a little bit extra on top when they actually offer the debt. A second item which came up during the community forum, actually, is one resident asked if the city could revert back to doing residential billing monthly. We did this many years ago, and I'm not sure if the reason to switch to bimonthly was as a cost-saving measure, but usually that's the case. Currently, the cost to do bimonthly billing is about $99,000 a year. This is staff who actually process the bills, send the bills to the meter readers. Unfortunately, all of our meters are currently, I mean, they're manual read, so we have to send stuff out to do it. If we were to switch to an annual billing process, we estimate the cost to be an extra $26,000. It's not a steep increase, but there's a lot more paper that needs to be sent out. There's a lot more processing of a monthly payment that needs to happen. And so the cost will increase a little bit. One option that people have been using, there are some who just like to budget, and they come in and they pay Angela, our billing clerk, every month. And then that shows up on their bill as a, as a payment that's been made. So people are just kind of already budgeting that way. They kind of know what their historic bill has usually been, and they just come in and pay, and then they pay the second bill and it shows up. So an option for those people who really want to consider, you know, paying monthly rather than getting two months' worth of bills every other month, you know, one option could be, rather than spend the extra money, which currently isn't built into our forecast or into our, in our rate model, to just simply ask people to voluntarily come in and pay it. And then I think the last thing which has come up is this, has been this discussion about the fixed versus a variable rate. You know, Abigail Seaman, I didn't introduce her, but you've all met Abigail. She's one of our financial analysts who's helped the city, her as well as Doug Dove, who is at another presentation in another city, couldn't be here tonight. This was a discussion that we had early on. And, you know, I think there are, there are five different ways we could do this. I remember a discussion, Gary and Jim, you can chime in if you want, we had a discussion during the summer about should we have a higher fixed rate? Because we know we're going to have debt. We know we're going to have capital projects. But then the increase would have been much more significant than it is. So the, the process that we tried to use was to move incrementally to where we go from 32% fixed up to 40% fixed. In years of drought, and I said this before, in years of drought, or when water consumption changes, and the amount of water that's flowing through the meter, that volumetric shift happens, from a conservation perspective, it's good to be using less water. From a enterprise system perspective, from funding the services, the capital, the work that we have to do, it reduces our revenues. And it leads to where we have to either defer maintenance, we have to hold positions vacant, we can't perform the work on maintaining our system, our utility system, which we, we should be doing. I just want to show these slides. These were an attachment in the council presentation. I'm not really, it's very small intentionally, so people don't worry about reading it. You can have, you can have a packet. But what, what I do want to point out is it was asked last time we met, Councilmember Dunsford asked, can you show us a 10-year picture on what the enterprise fund has been? And I'm pretty sure that most of you can see operating income, and you can see one black and nine red. In the last 10 years, nine of the 10 years, we've had a net loss in the water fund on operating income. If you look at wastewater, it's the exact same thing. And as you dive in and you, everybody can see the full report, these are audited numbers. The saving grace of the water and wastewater enterprise funds has been two things. One-time connection fees and transfers from the general fund. That's been how we've limped along for the last 10 years. In addition, I want to come back to that slide that I show you and just when I was, you know, thinking about this, and is there a different way we could do this fixed versus variable rate? When you look at many of the cities like Windsor, Windsor is already approximately 50% fixed, 50% variable. Napa is very similar. American Canyon, who's doing their own rate study right now, Bartle Wells is doing it, so we get some insider information. They are getting hammered because 10% of their revenue is based on fixed rates. And from running an enterprise, it's hurting their city as running a utility. Yountville, Yountville is significantly steeper. St. Helena is significantly steeper. I believe they're 60% fixed, 40% variable. So what the city of Calistoga has tried to do, you can see here, Torrey moved here, is to just slowly move the needle in that direction on the water side. 15 minutes in, I'm going to try and keep this to 10 minutes. So I'm going to go, I'm going to go through these options a little bit quick. One of the options or scenarios, if you will, that I think we can implement right now, which is very easy to do and does not minimize these broader goals that we're trying to accomplish with our water wastewater rate study. One, we can update our capital improvement plan based on a current schedule. There's other impacts that have happened, such as environmental permitting, regulatory agencies taking a little bit more time. One project, we actually, we hired some staff last year, and we were able to complete work in-house. And if we continue to do that work in-house, we think we can spend less money than someone else coming in to do it. A second option, or second item I'd like to do is our rate model assumed debt at 5% for future debt because that's reflective of what we've got in the past. So I asked Bartle Wells to assume 2% interest. We're in a different environment right now, and I'm very confident that if we can get our funds in a healthy condition, we can get a better interest rate. So just assume 2%. And, and that has a significant impact, not on the water side, but on the wastewater side, where we do have significant cost drivers related to the cease and desist order. And then the last one is we've heard people real concerned about how they can afford to pay for the rates. And so I'm recommending that we increase the amount that we spend in our low-income program. We're also looking at whether we want to continue to use the CARE program, which is a PG&E one, or use a different way to, to calculate to determine if someone is eligible. There might be some other ways we can, we can do that. But I still don't have a definitive answer on that yet. But we'd certainly like to increase the amount of money for this program. Again, a point that I'd clarify is we cannot use rate-based revenue to do this. It has to come from somewhere else. So it'd have to be a one-time connection fee revenue. It would have to be, you know, if we sold water, if you remember in the years past, we sold, you know, we've sold water to another agency which needed it, we'll get a, it's, it's a weird transaction. But the point is you can use that kind of money to pay for programs like this. You just cannot charge one rate payer more to reduce the cost for a second rate payer. If we did. If we did these three things, and I'll show you the specifics in detail, it would have an impact on rates, a little bit on the water side. So scenario one would reduce the rate proposals, here you see on the lower level, to the, on this lower row, to the one above it. So instead of a 15%, it'd be a 13%. Instead of a 14% in year two, it'd be a 13%. Continue to, and you see the same thing on the wastewater side. I just want to point out, in this column for fiscal year 2020, you can see where, when we had planned, if we have to reissue debt, we do it in year 20, and assuming a lower interest rate, you can see the steep impact that it has on the wastewater side. So it results in a lower, lower revenue needed, if you will, to cover the cost of the enterprise. Some of the projects that I talked about with either deferring them, you know, moving them out, I'm going to call them nonessential projects. So if it's something related to the cease and desist order, we have to do it, and we're on a timeline. I'm not going to recommend we push those out. Some of the others, Taste and Odor, Dwyer Road Pump Station, projects that are important, we need to do, but if we're going to focus on our other priorities, we can push these out. On the water side, we can push out those two projects to start in a future fiscal year. Similarly, on the wastewater side, look at pushing some projects out. One of the items I'd show you is this grit removal for our aeration basins. We spent money this past fiscal year. Part of that was hiring, you know, we had extra staff. We had a summer season. It was perfect time to do the work, and we did a lot of work out there. I think it was very successful, and they'll continue doing that. And they believe, our staff believes, we can spend less money doing it in-house during the summertime, hiring someone else to come in to clean out a clarifier. I won't go into the details of how it's done, because it'll take some time, but if anyone wants to answer specific questions on this, feel free to ask. That's scenario one. I'm very confident that if I go to a rating agency, if I go and say, here's, you know, we're adopting these lower rates, despite doing those things, we still are in a much better position moving forward, and I feel very confident in using that approach off the bat. Scenario two, as we're looking at every cost that we have, and we're looking at what things can we do to manage the cost to reduce rates? And really, there's one other option that we have related to two positions. Currently, the city has two positions, a senior civil engineer and a maintenance worker one. So think of the engineers helping design these capital projects, but also the maintenance worker, who is the guy that gets called out to help put in a new valve or turn off whatever it is. Those two positions are vacant. They've been vacant for a while. We've held them vacant because it's a way that we've tried to limp along with our utility funds. I asked Bartle Wells, "Assume that we freeze the positions. We don't, we don't hire these positions for the first two years. What does that do to the rates?" And what you, and this is in addition to that other scenario that I just showed you. It has a very minor effect on our water rates. I'm sorry, and this says scenario one here, but it should say scenario two. But it does, again, further decrease the rates needed to cover our wastewater expenses. Again, this is in addition to the impacts that it had on scenario one. If we, instead of, and this, this idea of reducing rates, what that essentially does is, the city keeps those positions vacant. We budget $0 for them in the fiscal year. It means that we can't go hire those positions to do the work. And currently, the positions, just to show you what these numbers mean, general water and wastewater, these positions provide services to the three different funds. So if someone is doing work on a street, for example, the engineer's working on a street, that would be a general fund project. And so we charge a portion of salaries to the general fund, to the water fund, to the wastewater fund. Option, scenario three, is if we were to, instead of freeze the positions and just reduce the rates, what if we took those dollars and we applied them towards debt reserves? We applied them towards making sure that we're meeting our debt coverage ratios. We don't need additional cash down the road to provide that coverage. It would have an impact on water rates. Again, it's one percentage point in these last, these final three years, and it would also have an impact on wastewater rates. The last option, and why I call this scenario three modified versus scenario four, I don't know. I think it was mostly because Bartle Wells had recommended that. We like scenario three, but we think there's a better way to do it. And what they recommended was, if you are going to freeze the positions, take the savings, take that money that you'd use, set it aside. Use that money to pay for a project, and pay in cash, and knock it off your list. And then if you decide to give a rebate or a refund to residents, if you decide to do another project, whatever it is you do, you've been setting aside cash for these extra capital projects. So you're still adopting the rates that you need to cover the utilities, and if you choose to save, you know, to freeze these positions, that's up to you, but set the money aside over here and use it for a purpose. Gloria Leona, our administrative services director, isn't here, but at the very beginning of all of this, one of the directions I gave her was to, we, the city needs to set up two different funds, which are debt reserve funds. We need to carve out these funds, think of them like separate bank accounts, but that money is there to ensure that we always have, that we always have the money to meet our debt coverage. If we have committed to having $1 million in the bank for these bond issuances, we have to have $1 million in the bank. That can't happen again. And so as we proceed down that path, it's very simple to have, you know, to take, I'll call it project reserve money, set it aside in the same fund. It's a practice I used when I was in a small town in Iowa, where we had very expensive updates, upgrades to make. We were under a cease and desist order, and we tried to use that extra revenue to perform these projects that we needed to do. When you look at the impact of what I'd call the scenario three modified, which, again, really uses that scenario one and the scenario three of freezing these positions for at least the two years and setting the money aside to pay for a project, these would be the rates that you would see, rather than the original proposal. You'd see a little bit of reduction on the water side, and you'd see a little bit more of a reduction on the wastewater side. When you look at the average single-family residential bill, you can see how it compares for what was original versus what the scenario was, original versus that scenario. You know, there's still steep increases. I don't expect people to clap for me when we're done with this presentation, although I wouldn't turn it down. But, you know, the, I think at the end of the day, you know, what I just want to iterate to the council, to the community, you know, many people have come to my office to speak to me about input, about ideas, about ways that we could try and make the impact worse. You know, a great public works director once said to me, I said, "I have a question for you." And he said, "The answer's money." Now, what's your question? I say that in jest, but I really do feel like, you know, the, those slides I showed you, as a newer manager coming in, you know, being here for two years, but looking back at 10 years, to see how the utilities have operated over 10 years, you know, we did what we could to get through those 10 years. And I think now, as we plan for the future, as we plan for the aging of our enterprise systems, as we plan to get out of the cease and desist order, you know, it's going to require revenue, it's going to require money to make it work. There are other options that council can consider too, which aren't part of the slide. The proposal right now, that scenario three, it does provide funding for operations, maintenance, debt coverage for the utilities. What it doesn't have is, it doesn't have a subsidy from the general fund. I tried very intentionally not to rely on subsidy from the general fund. One of the concerns that I have is, you know, we talked last time about how the rates are compounded on top of one another. And what happens when you provide a subsidy in year one, is if you don't continue providing the subsidy in year one, you have to have a larger increase in year two to make up for that, or you have to provide that subsidy. And, and looking back at 10 years where there were many subsidies, you know, that's, now here we are 10 years later, trying to figure out how to deal with this. And I think there are many options that council can have, and I think, you know, looking at vacant positions, how we can continue to limp along, you know, that's one way. We will continue to pursue every single grant opportunity we can. Anytime there's OPM, other people's money, we're going to try and get every dollar we can to put to the benefit of residents. I will say that we did receive a notice today, yesterday, that after every declared emergency, FEMA sets aside money for hazard mitigation. And we submitted a list of projects, many of which are on our capital improvement project list, but also others, which would be the really nice, important things to have, maybe we don't normally get to prioritize in here, to try and get funding for it. And we've already received one notice that says, "Your project is eligible for funding." You know, it's the same money we got for Fage. It's the same money we're pursuing right now for the Riverside Pond project. We'll continue to pursue every dollar we can, and Mike Kern does an excellent job of pursuing that money. Questions and comments? I'm happy to answer any questions and comments here from the dais. I, if you don't have any specific about the presentation, I'm more than happy to sit down. What I'd like to hope for tonight is that we have a clear direction from council on what you would like me and staff to do, so that when we come back to the next meeting, we can bring you the information you need and have it prepared to where you can actually formally adopt the rates. And with that, I'll be done with my presentation.
Thank you very much, Dylan. I think you did another fantastic job of boiling down to the important points here. Council questions? I have a few, but I'll let you guys go first.
I'll defer to Gary.
Uh-oh.
Just a reminder, council member Kraus and council member Barnes were on the committee for water and wastewater.
Thank you for the honor of going first.
Well, you've been on the council longer.
Okay. Jim and I stay, were appointed to the ad hoc committee to study the water and wastewater rates. And we were given charge of figuring out how to make the water and wastewater enterprise funds financially sustainable. So the numbers that came out of that were based upon, as Dylan has said, a lot of input from staff. And some input basically from Jim and I, in that we absorbed the information that was coming in, and that's how these numbers came on out here. We knew at a certain point that they were going to be very significant. As Dylan said, there's been a lot of subsidy that has occurred over the last 10 years from both the general fund and the one-time income that we get. As far as subsidizing things from the general fund, it's both a good thing and a bad thing. It's a good thing because it keeps the water rates low, and that benefits our residents. It's a bad thing because, at a certain point, I think it was five years ago, maybe six years ago, we had to do some significant belt tightening around here when we were down to $16,000 in our checking account, which might be a lot if it was my checking account, but it's not much for the city checking account. So as a result of that, we had to make a lot of decisions on this council that affected a lot of people adversely. We had to lay off people. We didn't fill positions. We did what the union calls clawbacks. We reduced retirement benefits. We reduced health insurance subsidies. We cut pay. We required the employees to pay more into PERS. There was a number of things that we did to make that work, and that's really what has helped us get to the financial position in the general fund that we're in today, as well as the fact that the economy has turned around significantly. So, I think Jim and I, when we looked at this, looked at it through that lens. We don't want to get put back into that position again. So, I kind of wanted to mention that to everybody here, and I spoke to Jim a little bit before we had this meeting tonight, and I ran it past him, and so he says, "Yeah, go ahead and talk about that." There are a few facts that we have to deal with. The water rate, the use rate must be equalized for all users. Our infrastructure is aging very rapidly. I think if you watch the local news much, you'll recall that there have been sinkholes in San Francisco where literally buildings or cars have fallen into the middle of the street, because they have some very old infrastructure there. The latest sinkhole was down in Fremont, I think, took out a whole city block. How would we deal with that financially here in Calistoga if that happened on Cedar Street, for instance? That would be a multimillion-dollar, uh-oh, I can guarantee you. Not only that, but there would have been catastrophic loss of water, which at the wrong time of the year might cause a lot of problems as well. So, we need to deal with that infrastructure. But at the same time, we have to realize that we have a number of citizens in town who, for every dollar that they're spending on the water and sewer, is a dollar less that they have probably to spend someplace else in town. Over at CalMart, you know, I go into CalMart not almost, well, probably almost every day, and I see a lot of you there, and I get comments about things. So, I think it's important that we minimize the impact on our citizens, but at the same time, here as the council, we need to make sure that the water and sewer program continue to move forward. So that's the comments that I wanted to make with reference to there. I do have some more comments as we start talking about the various scenarios and when the rate increases take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Barnes?
Yes. Excuse me. I agree virtually 100% with what Gary just said, and I would like to reemphasize that six years ago, this town had $16,000 in its general fund. $16,000. That doesn't pay for a wastebasket fire at City Hall. We would have been bankrupt. We would have been in the same position as Stockton and a few other towns that came through these horrible financial times. So that was our starting point. Then you look at the general fund slowly building back up, but during the buildup years, we still continued to subsidize water and sewer rates. We continued to kick the can down the road. We spent money we didn't have before, and now we gotta spend money to fix this problem. It becomes pure economics. It becomes pure financial guardianship, which Gary and I were tasked to do, and this whole council is tasked to do. And you try to balance that with the human element. What is this going to do to each individual ratepayer? There are folks in town that can take a 200% increase and not blink an eye. There are the folks in town that increase something 1%, it hurts. Folks on fixed incomes, both large and small. But we have to stop kicking the can down the road. Now, some of these things that Dylan has explained and we're talking about, I find to be merely financial gimmicks, and I think they do not serve the community well in the long run. Take, for instance, the proposition, I don't remember which one it was, I think in scenario one, where we would just arbitrarily say, "Okay, our projected rate is not going to be 5%, it's going to be 2%." That looks good on paper, but what happens if it stays at 5% or it gets bigger? It is exactly the same problem the state of California is in, in their pension problems. The same scenario that they have used for years, and that's why they're almost broke. They projected rates for their investments of 7% to 7.5% to 8%, and they came in at 3% and 4% and 5%. This is just exactly the same thing, and it will result in exactly the same trap. It is a road to bankruptcy. If you want fiscal conservatism, you have got to project the worst-case scenario. You stay at 5% and hope like hell you can get to 2%. You don't go to 2% and pray- the 2%. You don't go to 2% and pray every night that the 5% is not coming, and it's going to kick you in the butt real hard. So I find that kind of financial gimmickry, and I don't want any part of it. We talked about reducing the bond debt, or the bond interest, and it came up to $61,000 a year. The next two paragraphs, if we go to monthly billings, we gave back 26% of that, or 26,000 of that, or 43% of it. Then we said we were going to give back another 15%, or 15,000, rather, to low-rate payers, which I have no problem with. But that says, we are now going to give back 67% of what we saved on refinancing the bonds. That's mathematical madness. If you're going to be serious about this as a community, we all have to bite the bullet. These rate increases are absolutely necessary. I know they hurt. I did my own. I currently pay $120.80 a month for sewer and water. That's what I pay. I took the last 10 bills. Under the new program, the high rates that we presented originally, I pay $137.56. That's an increase of $17, a little over $17, or a little under $17 a month. For some, that's a horrible increase. For me, it's okay. It's not that much. I can handle it. But it's the dollars opposed to the percentages. I think the people that pay, all of us, have to look at the dollars, not the percentages. 15% is scary, but in reality, it's 15% of a fairly low number. Now, when you compound it, that's what gets scary. Under scenario one, at the end of the five years, you're going to be paying 174% of what you're paying today for water and 162% of what you're paying for sewer. If we don't do those things, or something like that, we'll continue farther and farther and farther in debt. And the day will come when those rates are going to be 2% and 300% as opposed to these rates. And in a couple of the scenarios laid out here, there are statements made that at the end of five years, these rates will be much higher. I believe that was in, I believe in scenario two, can't see it right offhand here. But if we don't do it now, and we don't start now, and we don't stop kicking the can down the road, we're going to be in much worse shape. Yes, we're all going to pay for the sins of the past, the last 10 years, but as Dylan pointed out, when you looked at that chart, nine red years and one black year. You're going to put in five more red years, and then you are really going to be in trouble. So as hard as this is, I'm open to some compromises. But we worked for 14, now 15 months, Gary and I, and the consultants, and you, and some other experts, and this is the best-case scenario. Save our water system.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez-Artega?
Well, what I can see here is that we had a real problem, and we cannot avoid it. So we had to discuss some of the options. And I will, after I hear all, you know, the comments and what the public has to say, I think we had to, we had no other choice. We had to, we had to fix the problem, and we cannot avoid it any longer.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Jim, I support everything you just said there. I thought you encapsulated a lot that I've been thinking. I do have a couple of questions for you, Dylan. The increase of the low-income program from 15,000 to 30,000, is that for households? Or is that for an individual?
No, that amount of money is how much money we set aside each year for the total program.
Oh, the total program?
Yep, it's for the total program. And so people who are eligible, you know, part of the discussion that's happened in the last, you know, probably two months, is some folks have said, I had no idea about that. So we even talked about how we get more press, if you will, that you demonstrate this, that you're part of the CARE program, you have access to a discount on your water bill. So that's $30,000 for, is a total item in the budget.
So you mentioned, or when we had this discussion last time, I think you were going to follow through with the mobile home parks to see if, in fact, they're actually passing that discount through their, to their association?
Correct. We have four mobile home parks. I'm not sure on the two smaller ones. Rancho D was one example of one. That's where the original complaint came. That was the first one we checked. They are passing that amount on. And actually, the person who originally opined to Larry Croman got back to Larry after and said, hey, I am getting it on my bill. So they are currently passing it on.
And we have some sort of a prequalification of gross income?
Correct, correct. Which I do want to point out, we're looking at options of should we change that. So we've typically used the PG&E CARE program. We're looking at are there other standards we could use? Is there, you know, HUD is a standard, standards we use when we do affordable housing. So we're going to look and see what other options there are, too. But it's always been the PG&E CARE program.
With regards to the staffing scenario, my concern is that we need those positions. And my understanding is that it's been very difficult to recruit for those positions. I know they've been vacant, but I don't know if that's necessarily been by choice. Can you clarify that? Because I do recall that for, you know, a year or a couple of years, we had trouble trying to find somebody to fill some of those positions.
Yeah, absolutely. Hiring an operator out of one of our plants, they have certain certifications requirements. A lot of times when we hire bodies, we're bringing people in who have very little experience, and we have to train them up to a standard where they can now staff a plant. It is very difficult to get good staff. So the positions have been, you know, when we've advertised before, for example, the maintenance worker, maintenance workers tend to be easier to fill than, say, a senior civil engineer. We're looking at, you know, a very high-demand job, six-figure salary, a pension, benefits, and it is very hard to recruit. In just one position, a utility system superintendent, it was vacant for well over a year before we received our first application. We do various methods to recruit for positions. So it's a very technical profession, water wastewater treatment. And every agency that provides water wastewater services deals with the same issue. So it is very difficult to find staff.
So my concern about that proposal is that what happens if we lose somebody that we have on our staff now? It's just going to compound the problem. And I think we're all aware of how lean the Public Works Department operates. And that concerns me when you consider the number of projects that we have to get accomplished. And we've seen, you know, firsthand, you know, what Mike Kern has had to shoulder, you know, what Derek has had to shoulder. And so I do have a lot of concerns about delaying that any further. I also have concerns about the interest rate scenario. I agree totally with Jim. There's a lot of talk about new Fed chairman, inflation, interest rates going up. So I think we need to move quickly with our refi, not delay that. My other concerns about delaying capital projects is that it just gets more expensive. Every time we delay something, you know, with inflation or just cost continue to rise, and it's just going to get more expensive the further we delay certain projects. Now, on the other hand, I also think we are in a very, very expensive market right now, especially with any type of construction. So I would be perhaps more favorable to set aside reserves, so that if we have cash set aside, and all of a sudden the economy tanks in the future, we actually, that might be a good time for us to embark on some of these more expensive projects, because, you know, there's going to be an opportunity to put ourselves in a better negotiating position to reduce costs. So those are my thoughts on that for now.
Thank you. So this is the fourth public meeting we've had on this topic. I know a lot of the faces in the room have been to all four of those. We've had the formal city council meetings, we've had the very informal and productive community forum. And there are four meetings. And there were a lot of comments repeated, a lot of ideas. I think Dylan and staff have gone a long way in addressing those and researching those. So there are a few facts I'd like us all to start this conversation from. First and foremost, the state of California has made it very clear, the courts for the state of California have made it clear, that we can no longer operate a tiered rate structure. We are not the only community facing this. Every community in California, and certainly closer to home, up and down the county, are having to implement new rate structures that do not include a tiering structure. So we can sit here and violently agree all we want that people who use more water should pay more overall, but the state has decided that. Okay? That's not for us to decide at this point. Dylan, if you could pop up the slide that shows the, thank you, the comparison of fixed versus variable, and I'll get to that in a moment. The debt impact, you know, a lot of what we've said in trying to get to our financial solvency is so we can go. And while I'll agree with the vice mayor and with council member Barnes, these reductions in interest rates aren't guaranteed. We certainly put ourselves in a much better position to go after them. And I think we should continue to do so, and we will. In terms of addressing the question of, is there any way for a resident or even a business that, well, residents, sorry, because businesses get charged monthly, is there any way for a resident to kind of balance and budget this by doing it across every month? You've heard very clearly why we don't bill or why we don't check meters every month. But everyone is perfectly welcome to come in and pay on a monthly basis versus a bimonthly basis. We all have relatively consistent water bills. So you divide it by two, and you pay that each month. And Angela does a fantastic job of tracking, and she can help you with that. So I think that's a solution to a question or a concern people had, without us having to incur incremental costs by going across the board to a monthly bill for residents. I've said this before, I have to say it again, it is a fact, it is the reality. There are changes and improvements to our primarily wastewater system that we knew we would be making, we knew we would have to make, but we were planning to make them over a longer period of time as more income and revenue came into the city with the introduction of new resorts, new revenue streams. But as a result of a cease and desist order, encouraged by several people who are, at this point, also complaining about the rate increases, we had to collapse considerably that timeline to the point of $2.5 million in a period of time that we were not prepared to do so. That ship has sailed. It is a reality we must face. Pushing off capital improvements, I agree with the vice mayor and with council member Barnes. It is not a great way to operate a system. It is the way that we have operated the system, as have many communities, for the better part of 10 years. And we could come up with a whole host of reasons why we've done it, but the reality is, we have. One of the projects, which is a bit ironic, that I find us considering moving, is one that could improve the taste and odor issue with some people have expressed concern about. So again, we push that off? Do you continue to have concerns about that, but not be willing to pay for those improvements? Vacant positions, we, if you ask any business in this community, any business in this valley, any business in the North Bay, in the city operating as a business, your number-one business issue, and they all will tell you the exact same thing, staffing, staffing, staffing. None of us can get staffing. You throw on top of that, you need very specifically credentialed individuals to do jobs like this. Yes, we can push off some positions, but I have the exact same concern as the vice mayor. So we do that, and then we have somebody else who leaves the city of Calistoga employment, who's in the water and wastewater department. Now we're in double the trouble. Not a best practice. Financial assistance program, you know, it's unfortunate that some folks weren't aware of that. I think doubling the money is, this council by consensus agrees wholeheartedly with that. I think we can do a better job of communicating that out. We're completely open to using a system different than the CARE program through PG&E. I think we've expressed that multiple times, so that is an option to help some of those in need. Before somebody gets up to the podium, to say again that the business community, specifically the spa community, doesn't pay their fair share of water, there is and has been and continues to be a surcharge that the city burdens these properties with, based upon an estimated amount of discharge of geothermal water. They pay a surcharge that we believe covers the difference, at this point, covers the difference of processing that additional water. What we may find out to be true, once the metering processes continue, is completed, they may be overcharging. We may be overcharging them. We may be undercharging. But at this point, there is a reference to that. So please save us the effort and the energy of stating again that spas don't pay enough for the water. Okay? These are facts, and they have bills to show that. The fixed and variable, and the reason I have this up on the slide, Dylan has gone to great lengths, and it was, I thought it was a very reasonable request and recommendation by some residents to say, what can we do about fixed versus variable? So Dylan, working with Bartle and Wells, did the mathematical work. And then remember, Bartle and Wells does this, this is what they do every day of the week. I went off and I met with the vice mayor of the city of St. Helena and the mayor of the city of Yountville. And you have that slide up there to show where they are fixed versus variable. I also spoke with the mayor of American Canyon. The city of Yountville's fixed rate is 76%. The city of St. Helena's fixed rate is 62%. The recommendation to the city of St. Helena by their consultant was to go to 70% fixed. Yountville at 76% is still having to entertain a rate increase this year. If you read the papers, it's contentious. They're looking at a 5% increase. The city of American Canyon has a 19%, we'll call it 20% fixed rate. They are getting crushed right now. They're getting killed because too much of their revenue stream to operate their system. They have a relatively new system. It's a relatively new city relative to Calistoga. Even with a relatively new infrastructure, they're getting killed because of the drought issue and people conserving, which is the right thing to do. However, the cost impact is significant. The leaders of those communities, the city managers of those communities, the consultants to those communities, will all tell you that the best practice for operating an enterprise fund has to rely on a larger percentage of your revenue from fixed. So we have Yountville, because they're close, at 76. We have St. Helena at 62. We're proposing a 40. I think our consultant, she's sitting in front, so nobody hit her, they would have recommended, and did at one point, recommend to us to go to a higher fixed rate. The ad hoc committee chose not to do so. Unfortunately, while conservation is the right thing to do environmentally, it hurts you when you're trying to operate a business, which operating the enterprise fund is absolutely a business. So with that in mind, you've heard our comments, we'll reserve commentary, further commentary from the council till after public comments. But please, you've seen the facts, you've seen the math. If I have to hear one more time that we're not transparent, every single bit of financial data time that we're not transparent, every single bit of financial data has always been available to every member of the public. I know it's not exciting. It's not interesting. It's not sexy. We go through the budget process painfully so. There is nothing we're hiding from anyone. This is the math. So, what we can discuss at this point are other ideas that we can try to cover this, but the reality of this situation is it is our responsibility to protect this enterprise which serves you as the residents as we move forward. I have four speaker cards. If you didn't have a chance to submit a speaker card, please, you'll be able to speak after these are done. If somebody prior to you, polite requests we have, if somebody prior to you makes your point for you, please don't feel compelled to reiterate the point. Again, no sharing or no deeding your time to someone else, and I will have to keep everyone's comments to a maximum of three minutes. All right? With that said, Jerry Jackson, you're my first card. Should you so choose, please share with us your name, which I've done, and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Matt Canning, well, he's come--
...like them sitting down--
Oh, sorry. One second.
Excuse me. I just, well, before you get started, I just wanted to let everyone know that those slides with those, all those numbers and the nine years of red are on our website.
Okay.
So, they can look at those and enjoy those numbers at home.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Jackson?
Good evening. Jerry Jackson, 2412 Rancho de Calistoga, representing the Rancho HOA. We realize that it's late in the game, but the Rancho residents still want their three minutes. So, we appreciate all the work that the staff has done and the council. We know that our rates are going up. We expect the rates to go up. We are not making any assertions of backroom dealing, not being transparent. We have mostly, we disagree on the wastewater rate for mobile home residents. When you have a fixed rate that's not tied to water usage, somebody is subsidizing somebody else's bill, and we feel that mobile home residents are the very lowest users of the system, and they're being overcharged. $35.46 monthly, correct, Dylan, is our fixed rate for wastewater. We know from, remember our study on the affordability of senior housing, 68% of those that were surveyed lived by themselves in a residence. I thought that was a little low, so I took our park directory and went through Rancho and found that we were more like 78% of the mobile home residents were occupied by one person. So, we know that a mobile home doesn't use water. People use water. And our information from management is that most residents in Rancho use one HCF of water per billing period. The people that have two adults in their residence mostly use two. There are a few higher ones, and for some unknown reason, we have one that uses 11. That's our highest in the park. Whether they have a spa that leaks or something, I don't know, but I received no name. It was numbers only. So, we feel that a senior resident using 748 gallons a month, paying 35, 46, is more than their fair share of the cost. Okay? I think Dylan, and I have to thank Dylan and Angela for their timely responses to my many questions. So, I think the amount was, the city estimates that a mobile home uses 2.07--
Ten seconds.
--units as average. We're saying the average is more like one. I've even had a resident who called me up and said, I had no water usage, but I still had to pay the sewer fee. Well, as it turned out, the water meters don't record fractions of a unit, so--
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
It rolled over, and then they didn't use very much, so the same billing period, it was the same number.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
City manager Feek, can you give us how, there was a math equation that was used, has been used to estimate the amount of wastewater for a mobile home, a park, a mobile home unit, correct?
Correct. There's really, there's two things, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, that I'll answer. So, first, on how we calculate, how we estimate single family homes as well as mobile homes. In our rate structure, which has been the structure we use for a long time, the average single family residential home uses five units of that, of the 100 cubic feet. 2.7 is just the ratio that is used, that's been used by our rate study to determine how much is used on average by a mobile home. When you calculate out what that means and how that drives rates, 54% is the key number. What's the average uses in a single family home, 54% is what we use to estimate a mobile home. So, when you look at the rates, a current rate for a, which is a flat fee, it's a fixed fee for wastewater, single family residential is 65, 25 currently, and the new proposal is 69, 49. For a mobile home, it's 35, 46 per unit. So, it's at 54% of what a single family home pays. So, it is a fixed fee, and it's about 54%. If we looked at all the single family residences, some have five people, some have more, some have two, some have one. So, you're, it's an estimation game. The other key point that I make out, as we discussed in previous meetings, is the way that the city bills for our mobile home parks, there's a master meter at the front end. Our contract is with the mobile home park, the property owner, not the individual meters beyond that. So, we could look and try and determine, you know, each individual mobile home, but that's well and above what we've done in the past. The city contract, you know, the city provides water to that master meter. The park owners are then responsible for delivering the water. They own all the infrastructure. They install meters. We don't have that information. The one thing that we do do is we verify that they're receiving the low-income discount.
And we're, as has mentioned, we're proposing increasing the assistance program, and it would be eligible for everyone regardless of where they live. All right. Thank you. Next, I have Antoinette Mayard. Mayor.
Mayor and council members, I'm Antoinette Mayard. I live on Lily Street in Calistoga. I want to preface my remarks by saying I have, I absolutely don't question the revenue required to make the enterprise solvent. Whatever that number is for each year, I accept that you've done your number crunching and you know what it is. However, I have much, I had things to say which I feel have already been covered, so I'm going to sort of cut some of it out. But the current, even the current 32% model unfairly burdens the small customers. The extremes of that unfairness, of that inequity are modified somewhat by the tiered system. Of course, now we know that the tiers have been found to be unlawful. So, without tiers, the regressive nature of the fixed fee model is just, it's not only extreme, but I think it's sort of outmoded now because we don't have any possibility of mitigating it by tiers. If you have the impression from reading the recent report that we each pay 32% in fixed fees, you would be mistaken. My last water bill, I paid 66% in fixed fees, which means that somewhere, somewhere, a high water user is paying far less. Each of us here tonight who is a careful water user, an empty nester, a retired couple, is likewise paying far more than their share of fixed fees. Imagine if instead of a per-gallon gas tax that we pay at the pump, there was a fixed monthly gas tax sent to us, bill sent to us totaling, let's just say, $1,000 a year, regardless of how much gas you use. The 200 gallon a year user would be paying $5 a gallon taxes. The 1,000 gallon a year driver, his tax would be $1 a gallon. How long would the people or the courts put up with that? There is a clear relationship between water consumed and wastewater put out into the sewer system. Like the per-gallon gas tax, a ratio of how much is fair for each person is not going to be exactly one to one.
You have 30 seconds.
Well, I guess I made the point. It's not, it's, the model just doesn't work in the real world, and it isn't reasonably equitable.
Thank you. Michael Quast.
Michael Quast, 1300 Washington Street. We all know that we have to have solvent funds, and we look forward to having a fund that's solvent enough so that we can see lower bond rates. But whether that happens or not will depend on your capabilities. One thing that would be nice to know is that there would be an effort to keep costs down in the future. Very little has been talked about that in terms of the management, but we would like to see that happen. But I think one thing that needs to be considered for the property users and the citizens is that we don't need to make their funds into a deep hole. And when you look through the final rate study, the first thing that comes out is that the rate study says that there should be monthly allotments so that you pay off the legal debt in 10 years. And considering that the general fund is already taking care of the fee, it would seem like it'd be better just to wipe that off the books and not put it into, right in the bottom. And you can look in the final rate study, and I can find you the table for it, but it is included in there. And it's about $160,000 a year that those funds, like the water fund, have to pay back to the general fund. It'd be much easier just to, since it's been paid, to wipe that off. The second thing is that as you go through the rates, it's rather hard to tell, but some of the non-residential rates under general commercial, which is not the hotels or the spas, including the public buildings, ended up at somehow an incorrect rate structure where they got a significant discount, such that their first rate increase is 81%.
General commercial rates should not pay the same as a single family because the flows are a little bit less, but the difference between those rates we recommend should be a closer. So, it would just be a practice moving forward.
Got it.
I wouldn't say a mistake has been made in the previous--
So, that's what's resulting in a pretty significant jump in the non-residential rate?
Right.
Specific to public buildings?
Correct.
Or public, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. And then, Mr. Quast, we haven't identified or specifically spoken out to maintaining future efforts to keep costs down because I think we've done a painfully good job of keeping costs down, which has gotten us to where we are today. But I can assure you all, members of this council are still here, and our current city manager, we will make all those efforts, and I certainly don't think this community would allow us to get high on the hog, if you will, should we start to get our house in order on this. So, thank you. Next up, I have Sophie Gulling. Please share your name and address, should you so choose, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. Sophie Gulling. I live on the famous Harley Street. Mayor, city council members, good evening. Lots of new information was given tonight. Didn't have a chance to just percolate through those information, but some remarks and some questions. I know that you don't want to hear the idea of the user shall be the payer. I had a discussion with my daughter this morning about, please, can you keep your shower short? I'm realizing it really doesn't matter. And to the opposite, the longer it is, the less I will pay. I am shocked by this idea. And I can give you some numbers just to illustrate that. For a household using seven units of water, if I compound the various fees, fixed water, fixed wastewater, usage rate, usage fee, and I'm looking at one month, the bill would be per unit $24.68. If now I spent 14 units of water, and that's talking the projection for 2019, and the previous figure was 2019 as well, my cost per unit of water used will be $13.61. Cost per unit, if I use seven units residential, $24.68. If I use 21 units, three times more, $13.61. I'm paying almost half of the price and consuming three times more. The council seems to feel it's okay. I'm sorry. I still think it's wrong. Other question. We're talking about a rate for five years for water rates and wastewater. What about after five years? Five years is very short for infrastructure, even where we're starting from and where we want to have. Are you saying that within five years, all the sewer lines and water lines in the city that need repair will be repaired? Can we have a picture about that?
You have 30 seconds.
Then I'm going to go to the other points. You said that water funds and general funds are separate and have good reasons to say it's separate. I would have a better picture of where the TOT fees are going. I would have a better picture of where the impact fees have gone, or the few amounts that were paid the last couple of years. And is it correct that the TOT is being used, for example, for road improvements? I understand for various reasons, you said it's going to be used for water.
You're at three minutes.
Is there a creative way to make it some more?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a few clarifying points. We're certainly not saying the user shall not pay. The user shall pay. What everyone uses, whether you're a resident or a business, is you pay for what you use. The example you've given on paying less for more units, we don't think that's okay. The tiered structure, this is a community, a city that has had a tiered structure and implemented a tiered structure for a very long time, who's now been told by the state of California, the appellate court, as with every other community in the state of California, you can no longer do that. So, we used to, and Abigail can go into this in painful detail, we used to punish high water users. That's not allowed anymore, and that is not something we can do. And you can shake your head at us. It's not our doing. We would, there's nothing more than we would like to keep that structure because it makes things very simple. But that is not us. That is the state of California. Abigail, every community is going through this. You are at risk of being sued, and this is a city that knows that. So, we're not a big fan of the departure of the tiered structure system. In terms of why we only do five years, because if we did 10 years, we would frighten the hell out of you and what those rate increases would be. The reality is, is you do them in five-year blocks. Abigail, if you can give some verbiage to that very quickly.
I'm not an attorney, but it is standard practice to adopt rates on a five-year basis.
And that's what every municipality does?
Yeah.
Okay.
Legally, you're only allowed to go up to five years, and we don't want to do this every year. So, we do it five-year windows at a time.
Great. Thank you. And regarding the impact fees and the TOT collected, I will state again, every single line of revenue and every single dollar of expense is fully open and available to anyone who asks it. Every penny of TOT is accounted for and demonstrated as to where it goes. So, if there's some confusion as to where that might be, please ask us. We are happy to roll out the financials and share that with you. 55%-- 55% of every expense this city has, police, fire, ambulance, sidewalk, streets, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, is paid from TOT. 55%, okay? There's not a lot left over after we get through that. And in terms of impact fees, we've collected several million dollars of impact fees. Dylan has shared in previous presentations on this subject. We've collected nearly $6 million in impact fees specific to water and wastewater, enterprise fund expenses, and infrastructure and capital improvements from the two newest resorts that we've put in, that if those weren't collected, everyone in this room would be responsible for paying at some point. So that's all there, and I welcome you at City Hall to come ask to see all those figures if, should you so choose. I have no more speaker cards. Is anyone else that would like to address this topic, please? Please share with us your name and your address, should you so choose, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Mark Hogan, 2412 Foothill Boulevard. Let's just assume, let's assume that all these people have done a wonderful job, and everything that they're telling us is precise. To use the mayor's word, that's the reality. You know, it's almost like the world has come to Calistoga. There will be no water left. There will be no long showers unless we fix the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please share with us your name and your address, should you so choose, but we all know where you live anyway, so you might as well fess it up.
Dennis Lang, 1322 Cedar Street. Good evening. I need to, some clarification on an issue I brought up at your last city council meeting. It caused the audience kind of to gasp, and also Member Dunsford and Mayor Canning kind of redirected the question I was making. And that is that the city, city's allocation is nearly $400,000 a year in advertising, or as the, the website calls it, its economic vitality. Now, Chris, you just mentioned the fact that every penny that is brought in and by TOT or elsewhere is public record. Well, I went through public record to try and find out where this $400,000 a year in economic vitality actually goes. I'd love to be shown that, because I, I cannot find that anywhere. My search did not reveal the specific use of these monies, and I'd like to ask tonight, could someone tell me how and where this $400,000 a year for advertising for our city is spent? Number one. Secondly, I think this freezing of the positions, the savings, Dylan, that you had mentioned on that, you made a comment that that savings, we could not rehire those positions, that money in the general fund could be used for these major projects down the road. I think I heard you state that. Not that we would want to do that. I mean, there's been some conversation that, no, we need to replace these positions. Well, this $400,000 that's used every year in advertising, I just think that's, that's a source of income for our general fund that would really help us do a whole lot of these projects down the road. And I think, looking at what happens in this community at the, at some of our parades, for example, our Christmas parades, and I understand, Chris, you made a comment that, look at how many people came this year, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I heard this second-hand, but, and there was no advertising for the Christmas parade. I don't know if you stated that, but I guess there was no advertising for the Christmas parade.
Reduced, yeah.
Yes. And so what I'm saying here is, is I think the people of Northern California, the people of California, the people of the world know about the Napa Valley. I don't think that money is well-spent by our city. And I think some of that money could be well-spent in some of these projects that we've talked about, and I'd like for us down the road, even this year, to look at that. And if you can, you know, tell me where that money's going, I'd appreciate it. I would like to propose that maybe we redirect these monies. At the last meeting, Dunsford, Mr. Dunsford, made the statement that that advertising brings in.
30 seconds.
That advertising brings in, and you gave a number. Do you remember that, Mr. Dunsford?
$6.2 million.
$6.2 million in revenue. Well, my question is, can we prove that that's connected to the advertising? I'm not so certain. And so my proposal would be if we reject, redirected these $400,000 money for one year and put it into the general fund, and see if that really impacts our economic vitality in this, this city.
You're at three minutes.
I think you'd be surprised. So lastly, I have one on a completely different comment.
You're beyond three minutes.
This is a completely different comment to Mr. Barnes, if you don't mind.
Five seconds.
And it has to do, okay, regarding his bah humbug request last council meeting for Calistoga's to put away their Christmas lights. Okay? I must confess, I was one of the guilty parties. My Christmas lights are still, were still up. And so after reflection from your comment, I'm going to celebrate the town that I love, Calistoga, and I'm going to keep my Christmas lights up till Easter.
Perfect.
Touche, and put up a big pink bunny, too.
Yeah. So to address some of your questions, the $400,000 that's set aside and approved by the council in the annual budget for destination marketing services, there is a P and L that demonstrates every bit of revenue in and every bit of expense out, line item by line item, category by category, we can actually show you where that is. So that is a tracking, that's done. The $400,000 helps to initiate $6.2 million in revenue. Now, if you could, or I could, sit here and say that the exact expense of $400,000 equates to how much of that $6.2 million, you and I will open a business, and we'll go across the country, and we will make hundreds of millions in dollars of being the first people to be able to directly correlate a marketing expense to revenue. What I can, no, hold on, you had your chance, here's ours, mine specifically. Every time the contract comes up for renewal, this council, absent me, has a discussion in public for the community to weigh in and decide whether or not you still feel, as a community that was founded for the sole purpose of being a destination for visitors, if that is money poorly spent, then you absolutely should come and you should express yourself there. To go to the point of saying, let's take a year off, the recovery that this community has experienced in other communities who've marketed after the significant impact of the fire, in terms of the amount of business coming back faster than other communities, I would argue has a lot to do with our presence and our top of mind out in the universe as to what Calistoga is to the destination marketing. Do the math of 400,000 versus 6.2 million, it's a fraction of a fraction of a fraction of what's out there. But with that said, the community can communicate to this council that they think that's a poor expense, and you can absolutely do so. I will tell you, though, that the 400,000, if it's not spent to marketing, is put toward, you know, the wastewater fund, still doesn't make it a self-sustaining enterprise fund. So, anyone else? Yes, sir. Please share us your name and address, should you so choose, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Matthew Hickerson, 3225 Lake County Highway. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. We still do have some small-town charm. Council members, mayor, allowed me to speak with them just off the cuff, and I appreciate that. I am going to scare you. Our water is rated 23, 100 being the best, 1 being the worst. The year 2000 Summit Engineering had a report identifying trihalamine methane as a byproduct of chlorine because of deteriorating infrastructure. That was 18 years ago. Napa County is the number-one child cancer in the nation, 26 for every 100,000, 22 for every 100,000 in Sonoma. That bothers me, because I have grandchildren. 18 years is a little too long to solve a problem that you know about. In that same report in 2000, they identified 13 priority projects. We got a loan from the agriculture, a $3, $4 million, $1 million grant, and they were said to be done in the year 2008. City report stating those two projects were done, and they're still asking for the same money for those projects today. All government-generated paperwork that I'm talking about, that's pretty upsetting. Trans, Oxy, Venti, Tax was designed, your budget was designed for it to go back into the enterprise funds. They added infrastructure pressure for tourists, police, fire, water. That's why we get that money. That's why it was proposed to get. You guys sound like, oh, money being from the general fund back into the enterprise. 49% of your budget is transferred. Is that not true? Or close to it?
55%.
55. So has any money ever been taken out of the enterprise funds for loans other places and not returned? I don't know. Maybe we should look at that. But there's some numbers and graphs that you don't tell people, and they should know. We are not any different than Trent, Michigan, in our water. You're asking to raise the rate for substandard water.
You have 30 seconds.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Some clarifications. Mr. Hickerson and I did speak on the sidewalk the other day. If you do have documentation, sir, that states that we have completed projects that were funded, and yet we're asking for that same fund again, please make that known to us. Happily, we'll be looking at that. Regarding the enterprise fund, prior to 10 years ago, the enterprise fund did on occasion loan to the general fund. The last time, I don't even know what the last time that was, but it's certainly not within the last 10 years. So over the last 10 years, the enterprise fund has been subsidized, in some cases heavily, by the general fund. So yes, there is TOT going toward that as well, and other offset costs that we cover with TOT that wouldn't be burdened, so we wouldn't have to burden the enterprise fund. And in terms, again, of the 2000 report, if Dylan, you could get that for us, and we can see where Mr. Hickerson feels we've gone askew on that. Is there anyone else that'd like to address the council on this topic? Not seeing anyone else, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for further discussion and consideration. Who would like to go first? And remember, staff is looking for direction coming out of this. Dylan has presented, in essence, four scenarios, any variation thereof of the scenarios. I do want to address the question of it not being an equitable system, and I do appreciate the example given of, of the gasoline. It's, it's based on the fact that we have to carry the fixed cost or the actual necessity for revenue to operate the system, regardless of how much of that system you work. It is, it's not fair, and I, I'm not disagreeing with that. The reality of the situation is, we have a very small user base on a system that costs a certain amount of money to run. And whether you take a shower that uses 10 gallons, or you take a shower that uses 100 gallons, the reality is, no matter how light a user you are, every time you flush that toilet, you want that toilet to do something and to work somewhere. And there is a base cost for all of this. If we were the only community that was leaning more heavily on fixed versus variable, then I'd say, okay, we're askew. But there is a reason that the vast majority of the communities, we're on the very low side, with the exception of American Canyon, which we discussed their concern. It's not fair, but it's the reality that we have to deal with, with a very small user base. And again, 30 years ago, it would have been wonderful if the city of St. Leon and ourselves built one system together versus the two of us having two systems neither of us can afford, from that standpoint. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that attended, not only this meeting, but all the other four meetings. I appreciate your comments tremendously. I've learned a lot about this town that I didn't know. I've learned a lot about some people that I didn't know. It has been an enlightening experience for me, and I thank you for all that. The 14 or 15 months that Gary and I and Dylan and Abby and everybody spent was at times a grind, but it was also an enlightening experience. I would echo Chris's comments. We are paying for the sins of the past, but if we don't start paying now, we will pay double in the future. The comment that I was looking for before reads, "The greater the rate subsidy is increased, the larger the rate increases will be after five years in order to keep the city in a self-sustaining financial position." And I think that sums it up very well. I think I am open to some tweaks, expanding the base of folks that can get a reduction from the $15,000 pool to the $30,000 pool. I am not in favor of any sort of what I call voodoo economics. You see it on a state level, you see it on a national level. It is a pathway to disaster. It's one of the reasons this country has a $20 trillion debt. And the politicians in Washington, be they Democrats or Republicans, are all responsible, and nobody seems to be doing much of anything about it, except pointing fingers at each other. We cannot do that. We don't print money, the federal government does. That's how they get out of it. We can't finance four or five trillion dollars worth of the Fed buying bonds back and then reselling them. We, we don't have that luxury. We have to pay for what we use, when we use it. And I'm not meaning to single you out, Sophie, but your, your example is, is flawed, simply because in any mathematical formula, if you take one large portion of it that is fixed and rate it against another large portion that is variable, the more you use, that variable will always go down. I don't care if it's bananas, or atomic bombs, or water. That's what will happen. It is a mathematical formula. So I'm not, I'm not criticizing your, your math, but it is, it's, it's a fact.
And we're only at 40% versus 60. Our neighboring communities are at 60%.
We were cognizant of this fact, Gary and I and Dylan and Abby, when we went through this. We started, I believe, at 60%, maybe 58, 60, something like that is my recollection. Abby's looking at me a little funny, but, yeah. And, and we said, well, that, that is not fair. That just says more to your equation, Sophie, that it would have been even worse. We got it down to 40. We fought long and hard. We had some.
It isn't 40 for the users. It's 40 for the cumulative.
Understood.
I understand that. We fought long and hard, we had some very heated discussions. Believe me, we tried to do this with as much compassion as we could. But financial facts are financial facts, and so if you're upset, I'm sorry, but we did the very best we could for this community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a couple of additional comments here. I've listened to everybody here. I've heard people at Cal Mart stopped on the street. Couple of things that I would like city staff or perhaps Bartle Wells can give us an answer, not tonight, and that is an alternative way to finance some of these needed capital improvements. And one thing that comes to mind is the possibility of a benefit assessment district that would encompass the entire city. And I realize there's an engineering study that has to be done for each property. I imagine a lot of it would be one-size-fits-benny kind of a thing. But particularly when I look at the capital improvements here, replace mains and valves for the water, and also for wastewater, it's a total of three, about six million dollars altogether. And I'd like to know if that would be an alternative to financing those particular pieces of the infrastructure, and then back that out if we decide to go that way later, out of the rate structure. So you follow what I'm, where I'm coming from? Because there's quite a, quite a few dollars in capital needs here, and if we could take six or seven million, six million out to, that might make the water use rate a little bit. a little bit different. But the bottom line is, is it's still going to cost us that money, it's just going to come out of a little bit different pocket. Instead of you making a bi-monthly payment on your water bill, it's going to turn up on your property tax. So, uh, that might be something that, I, I think there's a number of people in town would like to know how that would work and whether that would be an alternative, particularly to fund those things, but perhaps there are other things in, in there that could be funded through a benefit assessment. And because of the way it's done, maybe that's more equitable. I, I don't know, but I think it's something we need to research in the future.
But just, just to clarify on that point, you're just moving it from one balance sheet to a net, to the next.
At the end of the day, it's coming out of...
The resident still has to pay for it.
Like I say, I had someone say, well, why don't we just do a bond issue? And like, well, you can't do bond issues anymore. But a benefit assessment you could do, and it may, um, establish some better equity when you look at the cost for water. So, I wanted to say that. The other thing is, is I agree with Jim on the economics and the voodoo economics is, as you said, I, I agree with that comment. And, um, I think that there are some savings that were shown in the other scenarios and that if we were to proceed on the original proposal and then do rebates, we essentially do what the other scenarios do by doing rebates when we have the, when we have the savings in hand. So, that would be something that I'd like to see, uh, as a proposal for when it comes back to us. So, it's the originally proposed rate structure with rebates based upon savings from potential refinance, any savings that we might have from a, a position not being filled, um, you know, whatever it may occur in there. The other thing is, and Mike's here, perhaps he can answer this question, about the rate increase from the city of Napa for our water, which I asked a question, it amounts to sixty-four thousand and fifty dollars in total expense the first year, and then that increases sixty thousand dollars for the next two or three years after that. And has that increase been implemented as of today, or is that something that they're going to do in the near future?
It's my understanding that they have adopted those rates, and it's becoming a reality on the bill that we get from them incrementally as we go forward.
But when?
Right now.
Right now?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's not something that's going to happen July first or something?
No, it's in play right now.
All right, thank you. That's my question.
All right. Iris?
Um, well, we, as I say before, we had to, to do this, to fix this problem, and we had to come with a solution. One of the things that I will be concerned, or I want to be sure that our seniors, they receive the proper assistance when we adopt, um, any resolution here. And I just want to emphasize that they can receive her through the, uh, help, through the care program. And also, I believe that the Advalay Family Centers, they provide services for our seniors. So, um, and paying their bills is one of the, um, assistance they can get there. So, um, I think will be good if we find out, you know, through the family center, what programs they have and how we can, and be sure to inform the low-income residents that they can apply there.
Whether they're a senior or not.
Senior or not, oh, yeah.
And Dylan?
Mostly are, my main concern are seniors with fixed income.
Understood. In addition to the care program, I know you're working with staff to find a more, we'll call it a more flexible, a more liberal interpretation, whether it be through the HUD program, et cetera. So, I'm assuming that work is still going on. So, that could indeed, Iris, increase the base of people who become eligible for that, if not through the PG&E care program. Okay?
That's it.
Thank you.
I have one question. Our TOT is about six million dollars a year, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible to say, to take, building on a few of the other comments out here, two percent of TOT, which would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, put it somewhere in a fund for debt reduction purposes only, and retire these bonds that much quicker? It is not a loan to the general fund, it's a use of TOT for a specific reason for the betterment of the community. If you can retire debt, it seems to me that should not impact future debt assumption or refinancing of the existing bond. Is that possible?
Yeah, we, we just did that. This past budget year, we paid off one point eight million dollars in obligations to PERS out of what would have been...
Right.
...general fund, which is TOT.
Yeah, but that was, that was an, Mike's back there shaking his head. That was, that was a future debt that is incurred, it's on the books that we came back from. It's not a bond. I'm speaking specifically of a bond retirement. Is that something that can be done? Would you know, Abby, or would you know, Dylan?
I've done, I've done several issues where when you refinance debt, you, you actually forward, you front cash as part of the refinancing deal. So, now your principal owed on the amount is much less than what it is currently today. I think the issue for the city is that we've, on our, really our general funds and even our wastewater, our water and wastewater, we haven't had that extra capital to do the work. The money that does come in has been money that's been used to do the projects we need. It's certainly something we can look at, it's certainly something, you know, I, I think the, the point that Chris was making about the pension debt, if you remember, that was a discussion we had last summer, one point eight million, is there were other debts that weren't just bonds, there were, there were other ones. So, you know, I think the budget process would be a really good way to go through that where we bring back, here's everything, there's general fund debt, water, wastewater, there's other debts too, and maybe we look at it from a holistic perspective of how do we want to allocate money.
Yeah, I was thinking, not so much what we have now, the six million, but perhaps we have two big new resorts, moderate-sized resorts coming online in the next two months and right off the top.
We wish it was two months.
Yeah.
Two years.
Two years.
And take that two percent and help retire that debt. We don't have any of that incoming TOT allocated that I know of for anything yet. It's all going to go into the general fund, say those two resorts, pump in another two million a year. Take two percent, three percent, five percent of that, especially to retire debt.
That, we can, we, I mean, you're very familiar with the budget process. We can assign those funds anywhere we'd like, so...
Oh, yeah, I, I understand it. My question is, would that...
We could do that right now if you want to, and retire that debt.
Would that...
Just means we don't pay for or buy something somewhere else.
Exactly. But this is money that is on the come.
Correct.
And would that, doing that kind of scenario, would that affect refinancing other bonds, say from five percent to three and a half percent? Because you can't use general fund money to pay them down to do that. But maybe if we could put a pot over here on the side, that might even approach what Mr. Lang was talking about a little bit. You know, the four hundred thousand that's going into hospitality, which I think is a good spend, six or seven percent, you know, that's just a difference of opinion, but it's a way to take future earnings out, put them in a pile over here, pay for bonds, retire more quickly from the past, which would help the overall, just an idea.
Mm-hmm. And, and we were on track to do that with the, you know, we, we right now don't have that revenue coming in from TOT, from the two new resorts. There'll be significant users when they come online, which makes them significant rate payers...
Correct.
...when that comes online, and that will get us to the sustainability that we were hoping to achieve earlier. The full realization of the impact fees that they have paid to this point were great, except they were interrupted by this incremental two point five million dollars that when all this was going through and we were all talking about allowing these resorts to develop, wasn't on, on the radar screen. So, again, we just took it out of one pocket and...
Right.
...put it in the other. But I, I would be an advocate as we move forward and they come online to setting aside funds to do such, such, but at this point, what we're faced with today is what we have to pay for today, or at least for the foreseeable future.
It's, somebody talked about the five-year plan, and that's why we have it, because it's legal. That would help at the later end of this five, this current five-year plan. The more debt you retire, the less interest you pay, the more money you can shovel into other things and/or love to reduce water.
Uh, just one comment I make, and I think this is a great discussion, it certainly gives me some great information, especially as we get ready to start our budget process. Just two comments, I want to make one. And I remember saying this, and I remember I was talking specifically to Jim when I was interviewed for this position, but my exact comment, and this is just my personal belief system, is in the land of emergency, cash is king. So, from a city's fiscal perspective, I truly believe that having adequate reserves is the most important thing we can have in a time of emergency. I'll give you a great example. Last Friday, I attended a presentation from Santa Rosa. Santa Rosa City Manager, currently their budget, their general fund budget is a hundred and forty million dollars, and they currently have a twenty-five percent fund balance reserve, general fund. So, thirty-five million dollars approximately, which is higher than their policy. Their policy is sixteen or seventeen percent. We have intentionally set a policy at no less than fifty percent, and right now, this current point in time, we're much higher, we're above seventy percent. The, the way that federal law is written for disasters is the city of Santa Rosa will be on the hook for a portion of debris removal, and their estimated bill right now at three thousand structures is twenty-five million dollars. So, insurance money aside, other items aside, FEMA has told them their nut, their contribution is twenty-five million, and so that's why the city of Santa Rosa right now is spending a lot of time in Washington DC trying to look at ways to get the laws changed. So, you know, when we, when we think about reserves and money that we do, you know, I appreciate this, I appreciate this council's perspective on looking at, and everything, and I'm making just a quick decision, because there really are these other factors that we consider too. What if, you know, a disaster happens? Where is the best place to put that money? And I think we've done that and we'll continue to do that, and we'll always do it through the budget process, public processes. Thanks.
The budget process, which starts in a month from now.
I would make one more comment on that. I would encourage all of you that are out here tonight and all of you at home watching, come to the budget process, watch how we do it, listen to what we do, listen to the discussions, and it's an open meeting. You can have your say, you can talk to us. It is a fascinating progress, although it is laborious and sometimes monumentally boring, but it's a vital necessity for any community or enterprise.
Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Um, I, I agree with just about everything that's been stated. I think we need to focus on the facts that we're dealing with today. We need to support what's being recommended by the consultants, they're the experts. I am, I don't think anybody up here wants to pay higher fees, I certainly don't. I'm all in favor of first and foremost, doing what I think is in the best interest of the community today. And then in future, and hopefully, hopefully that will be sooner than later, we'll be in a much better position to reevaluate, uh, issue rebates, uh, cover certain capital projects out of general fund revenues, if that's permissible. I'm all, I'm all for doing that. But I think we have to, uh, walk before we run and wait until we get to that place where we have the luxury of making those decisions. And I, I forget how many years ago, when we only had sixteen thousand dollars in the bank account, was it five years ago?
Six.
Six, six years ago.
Well, I mean, we could be there again at some point. And, I mean, we were this close from being in a bankruptcy-type position, and frankly, if, if, if the previous councils never approved the Solage Resort, we would have been in, we would have been in bankruptcy. When you look at the amount of transient occupancy that that project gives to the city, that's what created the cash flow to keep us solvent. Um, so...
Okay. So, we have to give direction to staff, and just a, a comment about, and I, and I know some, I know people are having issues with the fixed versus variable, but at the end of the day, the more water you use, the higher your bill's going to be. Yes, the more water you use, the percentage of your bill that's fixed goes down, but the reality is the net-net, what you write the check for goes up. So, um, that, you know, that, that's how that math works, and it's unfortunate that we can't reward people for conservation, other than you feel good that you're helping the environment. So, with that, what direction would you like to give the, the city manager who's presented four scenarios?
Well, I, my recommendation is to support what's been recommended by the consultant. However, I am in favor of doubling the benefit amount for, uh, a, a low-income person from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand.
All right. I would be supportive of the, the, the original recommendation with the caveat that if there is unspent capital improvement, for whatever reason, we weren't able to get permits or contractors, et cetera, that, that be considered for rebate during that, that year to the rate payer.
I would agree with all that, but I would hate to take those positions out of the budget, the unfulfilled positions. I think they needed to be in there. If you freeze them and take them out, all you're going to do is make the rates higher later on.
Mine was specific to capital.
And we need those people.
But, but I think, Chris, I, I would suggest that those funds, if, if we were going to delay a project, you know, funds would go into a reserve, and then, I mean, at some point in time, we have to look at the totality of our whole financial picture, and that's when we would make a decision on a rebate. I, I would hate to tie it specifically, just because we defer one project for one reason or another, that all of a sudden, you know, we're promising a rebate.
Okay.
Yeah, if you defer a five hundred thousand dollar project, everybody's going to get a penny off or something like that. That, to me, doesn't make any sense. I like your idea better.
What about revenue, incremental revenue? We realize a grant for three million dollars consideration for rebate.
I think we should rebate that. If we, if it's, if it was part of the rate structure that we developed, and it was, because we deliberately left out grant money, because it's an unknown, but if grant money comes in, I think that, that should be a rebate into the, you know, to the rate payers, as well as if we are successful, as I think we will be, on refinancing things and getting a lower rate on future debt, that is an expense that we don't have, we rebate that.
Well, do you rebate it or you pay down the rest of your debt, which will result in a bigger rebate a little farther down the road? I'm all for paying down the debt.
And, and so am I. I mean, I like your idea, but again, I just think that when that time comes, and hopefully we, we have those decisions to be made...
Those good ones.
Those good ones, like, that's when we want to evaluate...
Exactly.
...the totality of everything, and I think everybody up here wants to lower rates if we can, so...
Yeah, it's how we do it and when we do it, and what mechanisms do we use to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me, let me just clarify. So, I appreciate, appreciate your comments, feedback. I think at this point, what I'll say, this is I proceed and we prepare the ordinances, here is, here's what I have in mind. What you won't see in the ordinances is the backdrop of myself working with Gloria to create our new separate funds, which are the Capital Project and Debt Reserve Funds. So, those funds will get created, the money that we're obligated to set aside, you know, we'll set aside, but that gets taken care of, that's not part of the rate, so we take, that's done. As far as the rate proposals that you see, the item right now that will...
As far as the rate proposals that you see, the item right now that is being added is we'll increase the amount that goes towards the low-income program. That's not going to have an impact on rates. The rate proposals, unless we want to commit to something with deferring a project, or as Jim, I'm going to talk to you after the meeting, my voodoo economics are my gimmicks.
No, they're not yours. They're just generic voodoo.
Yep, they're tools. They're tools that we're using, but for what they are, if we're not committed to doing those, if we're not committed to holding positions vacant, then essentially, the original proposal is what it will be with an addition of increasing that amount for low income. So the ordinances that I would bring back to city council in two weeks would just have a little bit of added money. It won't impact the rates presented, but what would be approved is the original proposed rates. And then on the back, and we can build it, craft it into the ordinance, or we could even do it by resolution, which might be easier, crafted by resolution that essentially says what you just said. If we get grant monies, if we have savings from, whether it's vacancies, we're already several months through this current year, the positions are vacant. There's been vacancy savings already. We can look at how we do that, and we can do that aside from the formal rate structure. But as far as Tuesday, the 20th, adopting an ordinance which sets the new rates, the only change would be adding in more money for the low-income program.
Which does not come from, that comes from the general fund, not the enterprise fund.
It can come from the general.
It can come, it can come from the general.
It can't come from other rate payers.
Absolutely. Yep, exactly. It just cannot come from rate payers.
When you're crafting that, I might suggest, instead of a rebate, a lowering of the proposed percentage for that year. Say the third year out was 10%, whatever it was. Okay, we got enough. We won't give you a rebate, but we're only going to raise it 5% instead of 10%. That kind of thing.
Is there a problem then with the financing, with the refinancing scenario?
The debt covenants.
If we tell them, here's the rates that we're going to adopt, and then at some point we say, "Well, let's knock off 2%."
Yeah.
Does that cause a problem for us?
Abigail, a rebate is a better solution when you have debt covenants, I'm assuming?
As long as you're meeting the coverage, the rate increase should not matter.
Okay.
We're not going to actively tell them that we're doing the rebate structure. The way that the rebates would work is it actually show up as an expense item, so it becomes a cost. That way, we're still receiving adequate revenue to fund this. But at the same time, I also don't want to get too far ahead of, you know, we still have to do the work, still have to refinance all those things.
Okay. Council, your consensus with what City Manager Feek has presented for next consideration, February 20?
Let me make sure I understand this. We're going to have an ordinance that's going to adopt the fee schedule as originally recommended.
Yes.
And then we're going to do, within that ordinance, we're going to have a resolution clause.
We'll just do a separate resolution. The ordinance becomes codified in municipal code, and then to change it, we have to go through the noticing process, the public hearing process. To adopt these resolutions, which are fully at your discretion to do, you don't have to even do a resolution. You could do that at any point in time. But just for the sake of having something written, something that the council has said, this is what we'd like to do, I'd recommend a resolution.
A resolution is just...
That's what I wanted.
Correct.
You will give us a series of resolutions that we can consider.
Would you prefer a series, or would you prefer one that we can, I mean, if you want to modify the resolution, we can do that, but I'd probably recommend...
I'm not sure if one resolution covers it, or we have a resolution for water and another resolution for wastewater. You know, if that's more appropriate.
You can do it to the enterprise fund, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a resolution for just the rebates or things like that?
Correct. The point you made about if we receive grant monies and we offer rebate, or we refinance monies, we offer rebate, we'll take a look and see what makes the most sense, makes it easy for you.
Well, that would...
Go ahead. Well, I just, I thought we kind of had a consensus that we didn't want to tie our hands to anything right now.
No, it's a resolution of consideration.
Oh, okay.
It's a resolution if then, kind of thing. If this happens, then this could occur.
Well, it would come back to the council.
Yeah.
Correct. All right. Do you have enough clarity, City Manager Feek? I'm glad you do. All right. Thank you all for hanging in there. This is not a fun process, as we know, but we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is February 20 at 6:00 PM in the same room. Thank you. Have a nice evening.